County Board of Supervisors is called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bomke?
Here.
Mr. Cavalier?
Here.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. Dudenheffer?
Here.
Mrs. Mauer?
Here.
Ms. Shelton?
Here.
Mr. Snellings?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Thank you and good afternoon. I'm Meg Bomke. I represent the Falmouth District and I serve as the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Our first order of business today is the approval of the meeting agenda. There's one deletion. The Stafford Regional Airport Authority will be giving us their presentation on the June 19th meeting. And we have one item on the consent agenda, which is proposed proclamation P-18-16 for Dr. Bruce Benson. And we have one add-on to new business. Proposed resolution R-18157, which authorizes the county administrator to advertise a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission to consider amending the county zoning ordinance regarding shared parking in the PT&amp;D zone. May I have a motion and a second to approve the regular agenda?
So move.
Okay.
A question.
Yes.
Where on the agenda is the add-on going?
It's under new business.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, cast your vote. Tally the vote. I voted. Okay. And we know that Mr. Cohen will be here shortly. So our first item, before we start into the proclamation, I do want to thank all of our first responders out there, our career, our volunteer firemen, all of our EMT people and our deputies in the Sheriff's Department for everything you did over the last couple of days with regard to the flooding. It was a tremendous amount of rainfall. Thank goodness we didn't get what Maryland has received, but it was a lot of rainfall in a short period of time and we really, really thank you for putting your lives on the line, which you do every day, and for your efforts. So, thank you. And with that, we do have a proclamation for Dr. Benson, so if you could make your way up to the podium. And it was not an add-on, I might ask, because it was an afterthought, it's that we knew you couldn't be here and then your schedule opened up, so we're thrilled that you're here today. So as most of you know, Dr. Benson is going to be leaving us the end of this month and going to North Carolina. But I would just like to say, I actually hired him when I was still on the school board, and he's done a tremendous amount for this community. It's a tremendous loss for us, but it will be good for you and your family, from what I understand. But we wanted to recognize you as a board. We've had a great working relationship with you. We haven't always agreed on everything, which we know, but you gave us the answers that we needed. They maybe not, were not always the answers we wanted to hear, but you gave us the answers, and that is what's important in any relationship. So with that, I have, want to make sure I don't give you the wrong one. Okay, with that, Dr. Benson. Whereas, the Board of Supervisors recognizes and commends Dr. W. Bruce Benson for his four years and two months of service to Stafford County Public Schools and 35 years to schools in Virginia. And whereas, before his arrival, there was much uncertainty in the school system due to the many changes in the superintendent position. Dr. Benson brought stability and confidence in the schools that allowed the division to move forward effectively and confidently. And whereas, Dr. Benson initiated several technological improvements during his tenure, including the implementation of an enterprise financial system that was well overdue, that integrated the school's accounting, budgeting, human resources, and payables into one platform, advancing the division into the modern age. And whereas, while Dr. Benson had many accomplishments regarding the schools, his efforts on this side of the street were what allowed the county and the schools to forge a closer working relationship than ever before. And whereas, Dr. Benson, through his dedication, has overseen numerous projects and programs that have made the school division more accessible to parents, especially in solidifying school programs across the division. And whereas, Dr. Benson worked with county government to examine how the county and the schools could share services to create efficiencies, streamline activities, and save taxpayer money. And whereas, Dr. Benson was the first superintendent to provide monthly reports to the Board of Supervisors at board meetings, keeping communication channels open. And whereas, Dr. Benson also maintained a close relationship with Stafford County Administrator, further strengthening ties between county government and the schools. And whereas, Dr. Benson will leave this school system in a much better condition than when he arrived, due to his dedication to excellence in everything he did and the high level of performance he expected of his staff. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors, on this fifth day of June 2018, that it be and hereby does recognize and commend Dr. W. Bruce Benson for his service to the students, staff, and citizens of Stafford County, as well as the Commonwealth of Virginia. Thank you very much, and good luck with your new endeavors. And with that, I would now like to invite Colonel Joseph Murray, our commander at Marine Corps Base Quantico, who started with us in 2015 and will be leaving us. So, welcome. Yes. And he's staying in the Rock Hill District. I didn't know that. So I just want to thank you, before I read the proclamation, for, you gave us so much support with the Armed Services Memorial, with Supervisor Dudenheffer and Supervisor Snellings. You worked with the working group. Whenever we called upon you, you were there to help, and I thank you for that. We also thank you for your Marines being so involved in so many events in Stafford County. That means a lot to us, and they're great role models for our young people as well. And also for your family. Your family was a great community asset and just a part of Stafford County, and so we're very grateful for that, and we wish you well in your new endeavors. So with that, I'm going to read. Whereas, Colonel Joseph M. Murray became the commander of Marine Corps Base Quantico in 2015 and will be leaving the command July 13th, 2018. And whereas, Colonel Murray has been a trusted friend and supporter of Stafford County during his service at the base by demonstrating a continued high level of cooperation and outreach between Quantico and Stafford County. And whereas, Colonel Murray's actions and efforts have resulted in a strong relationship between the county and the base, which greatly benefits the region. And whereas, Colonel Murray's leadership and spirit of cooperation directly resulted in the many ways Marines from Quantico have supported special events and efforts by Stafford County. And whereas, Colonel Murray and his family chose to make Stafford County their home and were active members of the community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors, on this, the fifth day of June 2018, that it be and hereby does recognize and commend Colonel Joseph M. Murray for his service to the citizens of Stafford County and Marine Corps Base Quantico.
I would just like to thank the Board of Supervisors. It says a lot for what you've done for the base, for the families, and for Dr. Benson as well, what you've done for the families. We put $1.1 million of federal aid into Stafford County schools. Quantico alone has only done 1.4 throughout the entire region, so it says a lot about Dr. Benson and what you all have done. And lastly, I just want to thank you. I mean, you have opened us, the Murray family, and many other families, and we've decided to make it home, so thank you all very much.
I have a few of those Marines that come down from Quantico, but they bring those really dirty uniforms and want to put them in my washing machine. Okay, and with that, Jeff Shover. If you could please come up. Jeff coordinates our Citizens Assistant Volunteer Program. Today, we have with us a number of volunteers, and I'm going to call you up. Yep, come on up. Come on up. Do you want to read their names and their hours?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, folks. Starting off here, Don Brennan. Come on up with 387 hours. Charlotte Crisman with our Fire and Rescue Department, 654 hours. Tom Camunsis with Stafford County Sheriff's Office, 672 hours. Ms. Valerie Hart, 293 hours. Ernest Hayden, Mr. Hayden, come on up, 288 hours. Nick Kopczynski with our Sheriff's Office as well. Nick has 1,765 hours this year. Ms. Deborah Seitz, come on up with 239 hours. And then we have Mr. Bill Smith, 387 hours. And then Ms. Doris McAdams, please come on up with 210 hours. Thank you very much.
So we just want to, we have a proclamation for you, and just want to thank all of you for all your efforts. You're so engaged in the community, and we know that you make a difference in everything that you do out there with the smiles on your face and the education that you have about whatever you're doing to help Stafford. So I have a proclamation recognizing Stafford County Citizens Assistant Volunteers. Whereas, one foundation of a decent and just society is the willingness of its people to work together for a common good through volunteers, joined together to help those in need, to give their time to recreational and cultural programs, to historic preservation, and to contributing their time and talents to local government. And whereas, Citizen Assistant Volunteers provide switchboard reception and Ombudsman services at the George L. Gordon Government Center, and in the past year responded to more than 100,000 requests. And whereas, this year, Citizens Assistant Volunteers donated 30,000 hours in response to requests for data entry support, traffic and transportation services at the Sheriff's Office, clerical and reception support in the courts, providing assistance at special events, coaching basketball, cheerleading, football, and volleyball teams, and providing immediate response and assistance during local weather events, like this past week. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors, on this, the fifth day of June 2018, that it be and hereby does recognize, commends, and thanks all Stafford County Citizen Assistant Volunteers. So thank you very much.
This young lady, it was my apologies for not saying your name, okay? Well, we have a wonderful, her name is Kenna, everybody. Kenna had 527 hours this year, so let's give her a hand. I apologize. Folks, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Jeff Shover, and I manage our Citizens Assistance Volunteer Services office. I'm in my 25th year with Stafford County, and it's my privilege and honor to work with these lovely folks every day. I have the easiest job in the world, I really do. Who could come, who would come to work and think that you could work with such great people that want to give back to their community like they do? All the hours that they give is just truly amazing, and what it does is it just helps to make Stafford County that much better a place to live, to work, and to play. And thank you very much from the bottom of my heart, and I really appreciate it, and we'll have some refreshments in my office. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We're now going to have presentations by the public. If you would like to make a comment, please remain courteous and respectful to members of the audience and to the board. It's important that you keep track of the time at the podium so that all interested individuals will have an opportunity to speak. If you are here to speak about one of this evening's public hearings, please hold your comments until the appropriate time during the 7 o'clock PM session. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. Speak slowly and clearly into the microphone. Begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light at the podium, on the podium, to monitor the time of your presentation. Green indicates the start of your presentation. Yellow indicates that you have one minute to summarize your comments, and red obviously indicates your time is up. So with that, I do not have any speaker cards up here, so we will start on the right-hand side. If anybody would like to address the board, please come forward. All right, with that, anyone on the left?
Well, good afternoon. My name is Holly Hazard. I live at 59 Harwell Drive in the Hartwood District. Today, I just wanted to bring to your all's attention, well, first, thank you for your proclamation for Dr. Benson. It's been an honor serving with him and helping, and seeing his great leadership at this school division. In that vein, I wanted to just bring to your all's attention that last Thursday, May 31st, we actually had an auto accident involving a bus. It was a hit-and-run. And there were no injuries, and we have reviewed the tapes, and I've been in contact with Mr. Sedeth. But we've been talking a long time about potentially putting cameras on our buses. I have spoken with many, and if you all look on many social media, there's been a lot recently of passing school buses, especially our special needs buses. People get tired. I am, I hate to say this to Mr. Snellings, I get complaints on our Poplar Road when the buses stop. They go right around them, and I even witnessed one. This would be a great opportunity for us to work together, as we have been doing in the past, for our safety of our students. The nice thing is that the state has already authorized us the ability to be able to do this in 2011. In 2016, the state legislature closed some loopholes about sending in the mail versus that. But the way we could maybe work together is that we would put the offense in the Stafford Code. We would be able to look at putting these cameras on some of our buses, at least to get started. There's some great programs that we would like to work with you all on doing, but I can just say, if you look at social media, there are not only comments coming in to me, but people are posting, and my comments with the other bus drivers are, in the last two years, what a change it has been in that way. And I think it's just another way for us to keep our kids safe, and it looks like there may be a kind of cost-neutral way to do this. So just wanted to say that. I know I've talked with Mr. Cavalier that potentially we may work together with your public safety group, and I just wanted to say that we are willing to work with you all and would like to work together in this safety matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hazard, and thank you for everything you do on the school board. Okay, would anyone else on the left like to address the board? If so, please come forward. Okay.
Hello again. My name is Catherine Nordine. I reside at 47 Reserve Way here in Stafford County. I'm here because the judge just a couple of weeks ago ruled against the new cluster ordinances the county had suggested. And I am concerned because Hartwood is busting at the seams, and redistricting is impossible because all of our schools are full, all of them. So Rocky Run, and Margaret Brent, and Falmouth, and Hartwood are all over capacity this fall. Rocky Run has the honor of getting the students from the New Silver Collection at Celebrate Apartments. It's 273 apartments. Hartwood Elementary has Amber Oaks, Hartwood Reserve, Hartwood Landing, Bridlewood Estates, and Hartwood Estates. And as for poor Margaret Brent, they're getting Poplar Manor Estates, Augustine at the Glens, and Saragotoga Woods. These are all huge communities. Being built an overpopulated school system, it's insanity. It really is. The only hope to stopping the bleed was the new cluster ordinance, and seeing how it was just overturned, and especially in our end of town, 10 years is too long to wait for a new elementary school and a new high school. We're losing kids on back roads trying to get to the high school. It is time to really, really focus on Hartwood. There's no redistricting solution unless you're going to ship our kids by two hours to a different part of town. We are all so full. And our community, I know that Ms. Hazard has ordered trailers this year for our school. I don't know where they're going to go. Are we going to lose the soccer fields? Like, there has to be a good solution, and it's more than 10 years away. And I'll just come, and I'll keep talking, and you'll keep hearing from me until things start to move, because that part of town is growing so fast, and we just moved there. Everybody is trying to escape the congestion here on 610. We want a little space. So I just, I ask that you continue to be mindful of this area. It's really struggling, and we need to do something sooner rather than later. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? All right, with that, we'll bring it back to reports of board members. Oh, Frank White, are you coming down? Oh. Oh, I mean Bishop Lacy, I don't know why I said that. Oh, you found another seat that's a little better. Okay, sorry Bishop Lacy. Okay. All right, with that, members, board member comments.
Ms. Shelton?
I'm going to defer my comments. I do want to pull item 14 off the consent agenda.
Mr. Snellings?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The lady that just spoke, I agree with you 100%. I'm very frustrated at the judge's order. I'm not sure why, what rationale she used, but I, I think we'll find that out before the day is done. Most of the growth that you're seeing in Hartwood is by right, which means it never comes before this board. It is approved at the, at the staff level. We don't have public hearings on it, and the cluster ordinance has really fueled it in Hartwood. But it is state law. We tried to fix it, but unfortunately, we lost. I just want to take an opportunity to once again congratulate the Mount Olive Baptist Church. I attended their 200th anniversary celebration a couple of weekends ago. It was great. What a great group of people. They do so much for the community. They are the oldest African-American church in Stafford County. And if you think about it, they were formed by five people who, at the time, were slaves. Just an unbelievable legacy. And they have lasted and endured, and they have grown, because quite frankly, they go to church for the right reasons. I see churches fail all the time, and most of the reason they fail is because the members aren't there for the right reasons. It's a social club or whatever it may be, but believe me when I tell you, Mount Olive Baptist Church is there for the right reasons. And with that, I'd like to pull item number 13.
Mr. Cavalier?
Yes, just a few quick items. I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for another expanding defense contractor here in the area there off of Barrett Heights Road, LTC Corporation. So we welcome them and wish them great success. Also, along with most of the other board members, attended the sheriff's award ceremony and recognized many great assets we have there in that department. Attended the Quay Harbor Board of Directors meeting and went to the very nice EDA, Economic Development Authority, Business Appreciation Reception at Potomac Point Winery. Also sat in on the School Security Task Force led by Sheriff Decatur, and they are making real progress, and I hope we can continue to move forward with that group until we solve as many problems as we can. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, thank you. I too attended the EDA reception, the sheriff awards, which was terrific to recognize all those amazing individuals who put their lives on the lines for us so often. And it was amazing how many that people knew of because of the things they did were so noteworthy that they received a lot of attention. I attended the meeting with the Joint Schools, three-on-three meeting that we had, which is a monthly activity, which was inactivity. I was very fortunate to go to the German Open House this past Saturday, which was excellent, and it's nice to see that they've set up their campus and expanding it and doing, fulfilling the sort of the goal and the idea that many people were trying for them. The, I also, just on a personal note, want to thank the EMTs. I had one of my students injured at a lacrosse game, and they, the family, when I was at the hospital, were just praising our EMT people for the excellent care and attention they gave to him while he was injured and then on the way to the hospital. Lastly, and this was from my, my normal day job, but I sort of wrapped in something from this board. Saturday, I had been asked to attend a roundtable on the crisis in education in Virginia, particularly pertaining to the lack of teachers, the great teacher shortage in Virginia. And there were many issues that arose, and one of the things that was mentioned was the fact that it is very difficult, and it was teachers from Prince William and Stafford, and was mentioned by many of the Prince William people, that it's getting more and more difficult to get land to build schools. And I said, well, and when it came to my time to sort of offer suggestions of what needed to be addressed in the Virginia Legislature, I chimed in very loudly that we need to fix the proffer bill. That every dollar that is being diverted out of dealing with construction, because we can no longer get valuable, rational, logical proffers out of, for, as the lady was saying, all these things that are popping up, is coming out of other revenue. And so that if the delegates really want to address that, and look at issues pertaining to education, the proffer bill is one of those areas. So I just ask that other people continue to keep hitting home that that is an issue that permeates not just in new construction, but it works its way through the entire system. And that will conclude my remark. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Dudenheffer?
Thank you. I'll keep my remarks short, but I also am on the Joint Schools Committee, and we met last Tuesday for the first time in quite some time. And to be honest, I was very disappointed in a number of issues that were discussed. But the one that I think was the most disturbing was the pushback by the schools on all the work that's being done on trying to consolidate and use, consolidate services and consolidate those, those activities which are similar between the schools and the, and the county. The, the most recent has to do with a centralized purchasing office, and it makes a lot of sense to do it that way, but I got the sense from that meeting that we're still a long way from, from accomplishing something we've been working on as long as I've been on this board. We've been talking about, and I'm not talking about in January, I'm talking about in January of 2006. This whole joint services thing is not about control, which is what I walked away believing that the school board reps on that believed. It's about efficiencies. It's about saving money. It's about ways to do things better for the, and that we can spend the taxpayer dollars on teacher's pay or whatever other requirements and needs we have. Unfortunately, it looks like the work that we did on that isn't coming to fruition, and it's a really sad thing that that happened like that. It was not an enjoyable meeting, I don't think, for the board members who attended. And that's really all I have to say about. And that's really all I have to say about it, but I'd like to pull item number 10.
Mrs. Mauer?
Yeah, a couple of things. I attended the Colonial Forge Scholarship Night. This was in my capacity as a board member for the Armed Forces Communications Electronics Association, and I really do just want to commend all of the incredible seniors that are graduating this year. I have an opportunity to review those scholarship applications, and, and the future is bright for us. These are kids that put in a considerable amount of time, not in their studies, but also in their sports and also into the community. And so I'm very proud to be able to, to say that we give out about $65,000 a year in scholarships, and a, and a good number of them go to Stafford County seniors. In addition to that, I also want to congratulate Vincent Carpenter. I attended his Eagle Scout Ceremony, and this is another area in Stafford County that I'm quite proud of. We usually have one of the highest number of Eagle Scouts every year. We, I think we celebrate almost more than 70 every year, which is just a great testament to the mothers and the fathers and the volunteers and everybody that really supports our teenagers here, and I want to thank everyone for helping Vincent Carpenter achieve that achievement. And finally, on, we had our Community and Economic Development Committee meeting today, and there are a couple of items that are important for the public to be made aware of. One of them is we have a zoning text amendment for the recreational business campus. That's coming, that has been added to our agenda as new business. We are also discussing a policy to set a timeline for developer changes. So one of the things that has frustrated me here on the board and several of my board members, and the public as well, I get a lot from the public on this particular topic, is, is none of what we vote on necessarily mirrors what is in our board packets, because at the very last minute on the dais, we have a proffer statement that does not resemble what the rest of the public has seen. So we're looking at making some policy changes in order to ensure that we have better transparency on that topic. We're also discussing requesting the Stafford Regional Airport hold a few more public hearings or public meetings at least regarding the runway extension. This is critically important, that the public is made aware, and I want to commend Mr. Snellings for making sure that that happens. And finally, we're discussing our tourism funding policy and ensuring that the way we expend our dollars is fair to all and open and transparent. Thank you, Madam Chair, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Ms. Baumke?
I just have a couple of comments. I too attended the Economic Development Authority reception up at the winery. It was a wonderful event and always enjoy what the state economic development people have to say. The sheriff's award ceremony was a stellar event as usual, and it's always nice to see them there with their families. And lastly, I just want to thank the Falmouth Volunteer Fire Department. They have been examining some changes by adding in some career staff at their station over the last six months, because some of the people that have been volunteers at their station for 45 years can't continue to get on a fire truck, and people just don't have the time to volunteer like they used to. It's not a Stafford County trend, it's a national trend. And I want to thank Joe Cardello, who had hardly had his seat warm, our new fire chief, and he helped move that all into, that from a transition to actually happening for us, because we needed career people in that station. But I also want to thank Falmouth, the volunteer, volunteer men, ladies and men there at that station by allowing the career folks to come in. That's a major step when you've been a volunteer station for, since you were in septic. So anyway, that's all I have, and with that, I will go to the report of the county attorney. Ms. McLendon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I may have no report at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Tom Foley?
Madam Chair, you received in your board packet our normal monthly report, and just wanted to refer you to the last item in your add-on folder, which is a revision to the way that we will track projects for you, some of the major things that are underway, particularly ones that require some policy direction or ultimately some decision by the Board of Supervisors. This is different than the board report you used to receive with the statistics. These are the things that are actually active projects that you're going to see come before you during the course of our agenda and our board meetings. If you look at that with me, you'll see that the items 1.0 through 1.9 are pretty much the items that we have been tracking and giving you updates on, but just wanted to bring to your attention a few of the new items that we'll be tracking, the strategic plan development, which we will start at the end of this month with a facilitated session that you'll go through. We've talked about an overlay district for the courthouse redevelopment area. That's item 2.0. And as you go to the back, some items just of note that we'll start tracking, evaluation of priority road projects, review of growth management strategies, the establishment of central purchasing, the review of benchmark localities. Among those things that you've talked about a good bit, and then the last items under 3.0 through 3.4, you'll see some of those major organizational improvements and efficiencies that we are working on, a number of those that we discussed during the budget process. So just wanted you to know that this, this reporting is evolving to a place that I think it's more useful information for you on the status of things. We will provide you with more information as you go. The dates on these reports are not established yet, so we're still, this is still a work in progress. I've noted that this is a draft report, but we have moved from kind of a quick update through a Word document to something that's tied to a project management schedule and a much more sophisticated way of tracking things. So more to come in the future. We have just finished the budget process, or hopefully we'll finish it today, and then we'll be able to focus on some of these other things. So wanted to bring that to your attention, and Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Okay. Really appreciate your leadership on that, Mr. Foley. Okay, with that, may I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda minus, minus items 10, 13, and 14? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Okay, cast your vote. Tally the vote, please. Okay. All right, that motion carries six with one absent. All right, item number 10, Ms. Supervisor Dudenheffer?
This has to do, this has to do with the county authorizing or standing up to VDOT and saying that we have the money in our transportation fund for future projects that we've already committed to. And my question to the staff is, do we, since we raided the transportation fund in April, do we have the funds to make this statement? And if so, where?
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Michael Smith, Deputy County Administrator. We do have the funding available in our transportation fund. All of these projects were already planned out ahead of time and committed to through revenue sharing agreements, and so that funding is available on our transportation fund. As we move forward, that fund will be depleted, but it is there to cover these projects.
So it's future transportation issues that we're going to have problems with?
Correct. These are existing projects that we've already made commitments to.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Chair, I move for passage of item number 10.
Okay, all right, that's R18-149. All right?
If I could just add that we don't, we can't commit future boards to funding issues anyhow, so appoint this move.
Excuse me, but we are doing that by saying we have the money, and we will provide the money.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, cast your vote, please, for item number 10, R18-149. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Item number 13, Mr. Snellings?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to defer this. I was, this is going to go in not only my district, but in my neighborhood, and I'm not sure what size this water tower is. I found out about this at the agenda meeting, so I'd like to defer this so I can sit down with staff and get more details, because I definitely believe we need to communicate it to the community, because this is definitely going to have an impact on the community. So I motion to defer.
Okay. On this item, it was the approval of a contract, I believe?
That is correct.
Okay, do we have a, who would this be? Mr. Towery? Do we have a, a certain time period where we need to execute this contract? How much time do we have?
Madam Chairman, Brian Council, Deputy Director of Public Works for Engineering and Construction, there's no real time limit. We are trying to get water facilities designed to serve the Centerport area, so that it'll kind of align itself with being able to accommodate future development in Centerport. We can certainly sit down and talk about it with Supervisor Snellings. That won't be an issue at all.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. All right, any questions for the board? All right, please cast your vote for a deferral of proposed R18-148. Motion passes unanimously to defer that item. Okay, the last item on consent is number 14, Mrs. Shelton?
Yes. I pulled this one because earlier, a couple of weeks ago, in a CDC meeting, we talked about the parking, and one of my concerns was a change to the parking that was now going to put one space per every two beds, which essentially meant that for all these hotels that we have that currently have primarily single bedrooms, that every two room, or every two rooms will have one car. So essentially, that would also say that half the people in the hotels are not driving there, and I don't think that's appropriate. So I would like to send this back to the Planning Commission. That is a motion to defer to the Planning Commission.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that a defer? Is that a, I thought it was a referral.
Madam Chairman, this is actually on the agenda for referral to the Planning Commission. If you would like, staff can take your comments and concerns to the Planning Commission, and they can incorporate those changes if they see fit.
Thank you, I would.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Can you restate the motion?
The motion?
It's a motion to approve to send it to the Planning Commission.
Yes.
Correct.
So we have a motion to refer this to a Planning Commission?
Correct.
With the consideration that I have on the parking. And in addition, Mr. Cohen, if you want to talk about your concerns on the same issue?
Well, and-
All right, first, do we have a second?
I think Mark seconded it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. Thank you.
Well, I just keep asking, I asked Mr. Harvey, I think yesterday on this again, but we keep, I don't see anything about widening spaces because of the fact that vehicles are larger. And so I will keep harping on that, and I don't know if we need to put it as part of the motion, but I'm not going to vote for anything that people just say common sense tells us the vehicles are larger, so why are we not even addressing that? So that's just my pet peeve of the day.
Okay, any other comments? Ms. Mauer?
So as far as the parking ratio to the beds, because there are a lot of hotels that, that have two beds in one room, if maybe instead of doing a parking ratio to the beds, a parking ratio to the room, that might solve the problem, and, and I would just like that to be taken into consideration. Doesn't need to be part of the motion, but that might help with the issue.
All right, with that, if there are no other comments, please cast your vote, and if staff could please make a note of the comments that were made. Thank you. Tally the vote, please. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we're going to move on to item number 24, unfinished business. Finance and budget adoption of the fiscal year 2019 through fiscal year 2028 Capital Improvement Program, also known as the CIP. Ms. Andrea Light?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Andrea Light, Budget Division Director for Stafford County. The fiscal year 2019-2028 CIP plan is before you for consideration on proposal, proposed resolution 1849. The adoption of the CIP today would represent the end of a planning cycle. If the board adopts this plan today, individual projects will still come before the board as they're contracted, and we also have to have a public hearing on the VPSA. So approving this plan today does not tie the board to necessary action that will be needed to begin these plans. This CIP represents the first year that the schools and the county did a joint CIP process, and through this process, I believe we've had many successes. This process created a new platform for the exchange of information and data, and created a basis of understanding for both the boards and the staff what is driving all these CIP projects. And so this CIP before you today is a reflection of all this work that we have done over the past 10 months, and it will be the foundation for our planning for next year. We balance this CIP within the limitations of our debt capacity. We've leveraged fund balance that's designated for capital projects as part of the development of the plan, and we feel that this represents the best information available and is fiscally responsible. Are there any questions?
Okay, Mr. Cavalier?
Andrea, I don't see a nice little chart like we always have with the, with the CIP. I see the school CIP, and then I see our-
So within-
Information there.
You should have attachment three?
Attachment, on the iPad thing. I see attachment four. Yeah, attachment three, I do see that, but it's not laid out like it normally is on this, on the CIP with just the major line items on it. This is full detail. What I was hoping for was item attachment four, which is the school recommended CIP with our, with the courthouse, is the only county project laid on top of that. That would have been what I, what we normally see.
Certainly, and this year, as we have developed this CIP, we've taken a, quite a different approach to looking at sources and uses of all of our available funding. And so this is, represents the model that we've developed to use to look at revenues in a much more dynamic way.
Madam Chair, just in case there's any confusion, the second page of, of attachment three is the uses, so the, really the proposed projects, and you'll see that that starts with general government and works through public safety and education. The whole entire CIP is on the second page of chapter, I'm sorry, of attachment three. So the court, as an example, is shown on line-
Forty-four? Forty-five.
Forty-five. So just in case that's helpful in terms of looking at the numbers.
I mean, this is what we saw in, in the meetings. I just would have liked to see a roll-up like we all have seen before, like the schools produced on, on their graphic versus this Excel spreadsheet. Do you get what I'm getting at here?
Absolutely. When we put the adopted CIP in the budget, we'll make sure that we have something like that for you, Mr. Cavalier.
Thank you.
Ms. Mauer?
Quick question, just for clarification and also for the public's perspective. I'm looking at high school number six. There's money in fiscal year 2026, but I think, see on the next page that it actually opens in 2026? Is this leftover funding of high school number six, that it's going to open in 2026?
It will open in, in 2026. That last little bit of funding does those kind of final type of things. Also, the schools are really good about holding back those final dollars to make sure that, that the project, that the vendor has met all the conditions within the project.
Okay, and just for, and again, this is for, for the public's perspective, the high schools will be overcapacity according to these projections in 2025, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I would say, Madam Chair, the, the number of seats they'll be over was determined to be a reasonable number, since this high school would open the next year, but there will be, need to be some consideration of how that's best handled, whether that's trailers for a year or class sizes changing. for a year or class sizes changing for that short period of time.
Right, and also, sometimes when you have students transferring to other schools, some kids are, like for this Commonwealth Governor's School program, and you have kids from the Boots program, they're not in the school in the afternoon, you know, there are different things that change the dynamics of how many students are actually in the school every day, so, but it's not a significant number, but there is a possibility that we might need some trailers.
And again, I think the number in terms of the projections is 132, and that's across all the high schools, so, but I think it's an important point.
Mrs. Mauer?
So, you know, it's interesting, we keep looking at the school capacity, which is incredibly important in how we make, do all of our decision-making. Have we done an analysis of the courthouse capacity, and can it be incorporated into this document in the same way? We talk about how important the courthouse is, but I really haven't seen the capacity numbers the same way we do these school numbers.
Certainly, I believe that there are studies that did some projections on courthouse usage, and we could incorporate that into this model.
Yeah, I think that information needs to be shared with the board, because some of us have discussed that, and I'm sure Fred Presley, is he in the audience somewhere? Oh, there he is, way in the back. So I know that he has worked on that, and, I mean, that's one of the, yeah, is that information available?
Madam Chair, it is available, based on some studies that were done a few years ago when the project was first put together. And I think we should incorporate it into the background documents, and we will when we finalize the CIP, but that is also the final stage of us coming back to you before you decide on a court, is we're going to go back over the caseload numbers that drove the need for the court. And also, we've done some additional analysis on the actual use of the courts, how often they're not in use. So we're going to bring all of that back before we expect you to make any final decision. So I think, I think those all are appropriate, and it is similar to the schools in terms of the capacity and so forth. You need to see the numbers that are driving the need for the project.
Absolutely.
So I, what about affordability? What I don't see in the background package, but we have talked about at significant length, is whether or not we can incorporate this debt load into, because we have to pay it back. So for every million dollars in debt, and I know I'm going to say it one more time, for every million dollars we do in debt, it's one teacher, one firefighter, one sheriff's deputy that we are giving up for the next 30 years. So it's, these are, these are heavy decisions, so it's not about debt capacity, but it's also about what we're giving up when we, when we take on some of these projects. And so what I would like to ask first off is how much are our debt payments currently?
They're about $45 million in fiscal year 19.
Between schools and county?
Correct.
Interesting. And that would pay for a lot of roads, and a lot of teachers, and a lot of raises that are desperately needed, so I appreciate that.
All right, any other questions for Mrs. Light? Mr. Cavalier?
And I don't know if, Andrea, you can answer this one, might have to get the schools up on this one, but the $10 million earmarked for renovation of Ferry Farm Elementary School, do we have any background information on what that's going toward?
It's my understanding, Mr. Cavalier, that they will have an A&E firm come and look at that and do design work and create a list of what those projects would be. Because that project isn't necessarily starting in fiscal year, until fiscal year 20, all of that work, we'd be able to bring that back to the Technical Review Committee and look at that and bring it back through the Oversight Committee as a project and review that in much more detail when we have that.
Here's what my concern is. If we've been working this diligently for the last several months, and this has been going on actually for years and years before this, don't we have any estimate on, you know, what needs done? Does the HVAC system need replaced? Does the roof need replaced? You know, how much of the, you know, infrastructure costs are we looking at? How much is aesthetic, you know? Those are the kind of things I'd like to see some numbers on.
Okay.
So-
Yeah, I don't, I don't think-
Do we, do we have anything on that, Bruce?
Some of that information was submitted with the requests, and I think if, if you want some more details, it's best to have the school staff respond to that question if you want that at this point.
Yeah, I saw, I saw what they had provided before, and a lot, most of that had current revenue numbers attached to vice the CIP. So I just looked, I mean, this is the capital improvements plan. I don't see a plan associated with this $10.37 million. And so unless I see that plan, I'm going to have a hard time justifying a yay vote for it. It just, I have to have something.
So, Mr. Cavalier, your question is regarding the $10.3 for Ferry Farm?
Correct.
That first tranche?
Correct.
Well, and I, I think based on the information that I have, I think you're right, that there really isn't a plan yet, they're in the process of trying to come up with that plan on what those numbers are, so-
My argument is that we've been talking about this in detail for months and months ad nauseum. I mean, we started this joint CIP process just for this fact alone, and yet we are sitting here today at the 11th hour, and we don't have a plan. How do you explain that?
Mr. Cohen?
I'm not sure I can explain that, but, but the, from all the information that I have been able to gather, there's sort of two tracks that things have been going on. One is the typical repairs, renewals, things that should have been done over the last decade that were not done because of the great claim that there was going to be something built for us soon. If you, and so there was that element, and then there was the element-
Referring specifically to Ferry Farm.
Right, to Ferry Farm. And there were specific items that other schools were getting, and in fact, that, and I say, I think I said this at our last time when we dealt with this, that even at one of the last school board meetings, they spent, they allocated millions of dollars for, and they didn't include anything in Ferry Farm. So that there was mentality had been, we're going to build a brand-new one, so we don't need to do anything. And as this process has gone through, we've seen that the idea of building a new one was going to be another decade out, so that would have been 20 years of not doing anything. So that was one iteration, which I understand that there now has been a commitment on the part of the schools to actually do some of those things that they have not been doing during, with regular money in regular times. So that now the concepts, and this is why they're going back, I believe, to look at exactly what this will be done with the $10 million is, to do something, not the way back when, before I was around, 26, 28 million dollar thing that you all had to deal with, not the $45 million, let's build a brand-new, it's looking specifically at what needs to be done to the structure of the building, the type of things that you're saying. And I believe, and Mr. Foley can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but now there is a process that this summer, they will actually be going forward and coming up with that specific list. And the concern is that without a specific verifiable action, that we're not certain what's going to happen. So I think we're at the beginning of it. These are placeholders, I think Mr. Foley keeps saying, these are placeholders that's going to change, and it could change, but I think this was going to be one of my praises to you, Ms. Light, is I, since getting on this body, and even before, I've been really concerned about the fact that nothing was happening to that school for over a decade. And when I first came on, it was mentioned that it would be another decade. So I am thrilled completely that we have been able to move this building, and we're not talking the old argument of parity, as in their building up this other end of the county has a library of this many feet by that many feet, and we deserve it. We're talking in parity as our building is built in 1957 and is antiquated, and the library's not large enough to handle having a computer lab, so we just want to have something that's reasonable. So I think people have shifted, I think people have moved, so I thank you for doing that. I also praised Dr. Chase in her analysis to try to make sure that things are done. So I understand your concern, I would love to see a specific list by now, too, but I think that there is an institutional blockage of that idea, that they were, that there was an institutional blockage, that we want a new building, even if they have to wait for 20 years to get a new building, gosh darn it, that's what we want. And I think, thanks to the board members on this board, and I appreciate your work, being that we want something done with this, this building, maybe not the Nirvana, but we want something done in the near term, I thank you for that, because I think that has shifted the paradigm, so that they are actually addressing what you're, what you've been talking about, Mr. Cavalier. I think you in particular have been very strong in what you think needs to be done, and I think they finally have been listening.
All right, Mrs. Mauer?
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Tom, I really do.
Are you a butt?
But, but, when you manage buildings, and I am not an engineer, but you have a laundry list of things that are wrong with the building, and so I've been hearing very emphatically, that there are rats, and there's no lighting, and the HVAC is broken, and these windows are broken, and so if you literally have a building that has systems that are not working optimally, that are literally affecting the learning environment, if you are that building's owner, you better, I mean, you better be keeping that list running all the time. I mean, there is, and so I echo what Mr. Cavalier says, and more importantly, and what gave me considerable pause, and I appreciate Mr. McCosker, because Mr. McCosker gave me a list. What's unfortunate is Mr. McCosker gave me a list, and, and it shouldn't come through Mr. McCosker, but, but in the paper, what I saw was a quote, well, we're going to see how much money they give us, and then we're going to figure out what we're going to fix. And that is very disconcerting, because we have a limited amount of funds, we need to rack and stack our priorities, and for example, something that's incredibly important here on our side of the street is ensuring that we have air scrubbing filters in our fire stations, which we have been slowly but surely, you know, switching out and fixing, but we didn't go out and fix them all, and these air scrubbing filters, it has been proven that they're so important that not doing this particular repair is leading to cancer, literal lung cancer of our firefighters. So, so if we're going to put off that priority, what I don't want to do is throw $10 million across the street, or plan for $10 million, and then find out that they're repaving a parking lot. Because repaving a parking lot, in my mind, will never, ever, ever be more important than the air scrubbing filters in our fire stations. So this is why, you know, and I'm not speaking for you, Mr. Cavalier, but this is why I'm kind of taken aback, that there isn't a specific list of absolute items that need to be fixed, because, you know, A, as a, as a building maintenance person, you should have that running total regardless. I mean, that, that's just flat-out your job. But B, we need to rack and stack those priorities to ensure that we are ensuring the safety and the learning environment of everyone. And, and unless you've got a sinkhole in the middle of Ferry Farm's parking lot, or more important, the Gary Melcher parking lot, which that was on the list, mind you, in the first round of these priorities that we were talking about, you know, I'm going to go in a different direction that speaks to the health and safety of, you know, everybody here in Stafford County. And, and that's why that is so critically important, and why I was taken aback by that quote in the paper.
Chair?
Okay, hang on. Mr. Cavalier is next.
Yeah, and I am not questioning the need to renovate Ferry Farm Elementary School. It's one of our older schools. I, I agree that we need to put some money into it, but I want to do this in a reasonable and logical fashion, and I don't see what we're doing as such. You know, Mr. Cohen referred to an institutional blockage. I don't understand what an institutional blockage is. I know what a board blockage is, though, and I'm prepared to do that, because I need to see a plan before I'm going to support any monies going toward that renovation. And it's that simple, and we've had this out there so long that I can't not make the stand.
Ms. Shelton?
I have a different subject, not quite the same. And so I do agree and understand the need to have placeholders in budgets, and I love the fact that we've gone through all these different scenarios to look at what that would look like, what I don't like, and if I look at the background package that you've given us, there's a couple of things that you said in there that, make sure I understood them correctly, Ms. Light. One of them was, is that to fund this budget, we're going to take all the proffers and all the cash that we have for the next 10 years, and we have to raise taxes another four and a half cents just to do this. Is that correct?
So what we looked at, when we looked at all of our funding sources, is that we looked at our fund balance that we have in our general fund, and we looked at our capital projects reserve, we looked at any amount of dollars that we thought may be able to be leveraged and used for one-time capital. We also looked at the capital projects fund that the county has on the county side to see if there's available fund balance within that fund that would also be able to be used. So we're looking for those kind of resting dollars that are sitting there. And as part of doing all of that, I still think that this is also very fiscally responsible, because we do have undesignated fund balance, and we still have revenue stabilization that could be leveraged if there was some sort of economic downturn or recession. So we're not wiping out the savings account, certainly. When we looked at the proffers, and we'll look at proffers again before we do the next CIP plan, is we looked at the proffers that were available for these, these sorts of projects, certainly that were appropriate to those. There, I couldn't tell you necessarily today what proffers are available, but this is not taking all the proffers that are available. Does that help?
It does. I have one more question, ma'am? Actually, I have a couple, but I'll try to keep it quiet. And I'll, okay, don't. And I'll go back to what Ms. Mauer and Ms. Cavalier said, and I thought, and I'm new, but I thought that our process was that we took things through the Technical Review Committee, the TRC, and that would have mitigated the question that we have now about Ferry Farms. Did Ferry Farms not go through the TRC?
The Ferry Farm came to, the Ferry Farm Elementary came as a rebuild to the Technical Review Committee, and then when we came to the Oversight Committee and they started to do their work, there was a lot of changes that happened through the Oversight Committee, through the conversations of the board, there were new opportunities that came forth. This is the first time that we have done a joint CIP in such a robust manner, where we have three board members and three school board members sitting at the table together and talking about, you know, how much an HVAC system costs for a school. We really got into some details, so there's a lot of questions. And I said earlier, I think that this is, there's a lot of successes, and those successes came from a lot of this work that we've done.
I would agree.
Okay, do you have another one, Ms. Shelton?
Oh, I got a list. Okay, sorry, yeah, so, pardon me? Oh, did you answer the question about the 4.5 cents tax raise that's in the background package? Did you? We didn't hear it, could you restate it?
I didn't say it, but yes. Right, over the course of 10 years.
Okay, with that, I can tell, I've been having eye contact with Dr. Benson, because some of these questions are related to the school, so I would like for him to come up and address the board. And, and before Dr. Benson speaks, I would like to just remind everybody that what we're seeing with some of these older schools happened with Falmouth Elementary, Stafford Elementary, Grafton Village, Stafford High School. The same thing happened, those schools didn't get a lot of things when you're getting ready to renovate. So what we're seeing happen at Ferry Farm, the exact same thing, I just don't want people to think that it's only Ferry Farm that it's happening to. It happened. I'm telling you, they didn't do anything to Stafford High School for 20 years. And, you know, I had a list there, too. So, well, if you'd known about some of the mechanical systems inside, but that's a conversation for another day. So I would just like to, to just remind everybody that, you know, it's not just Ferry Farm. This has been out there for a lot of our older schools. So, and with that, Dr. Benson, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And what would my last meeting be without an opportunity to address the board? So, Mr. Cavalier, we do- So, Mr. Cavalier, we, we do have a list of what needs to be done at Ferry Farm. If we were going to do a renovation comparable to what we did at Falmouth, but it's got a price tag of about $24 million, okay? We are clearly going to have to prioritize what gets done on that list to make it fit within the affordability that, that we have, our ability to, to borrow, okay? What we're, what we're recommending is, we do need to bring an engineering firm in here to take a look at what is possible. But what we want to look at is renovating the oldest portion of the building completely, which would give us a new library, a new music room, a new art room, and six, seven new classrooms, some of the administrative areas, that, parts of the building that would be, give us an opportunity to positively impact pretty much everybody in the building. And some minor renovations to connect the rest of the building, to pull it all together. And it's a strategy that I used in a previous division that Mr. Foley is aware of, where we quite frankly didn't have the resources to do a complete overhaul of the facility, but we impacted the core services, core features of the building, such that every child, every teacher, every person that is in that building, including the community, would have an opportunity to, to access some modernized, a modernized facility. So we are trying to work within that, within that debt limit. And so there is, there is a number that we put in there to, to start with. There are some other resources that we believe we can bring to bear to help with some other improvements throughout the building. Yes, lighting is a challenge. We are, we're going to have an RFP out on the street to look at some performance energy contracting, and one of the things that we want to do with the next level of performance energy contracting is move to LED lighting. We would like Ferry Farm to be the first school that we, we do that in. So there will be other resources that we will bring to bear to try and address some of the other issues throughout the, the building. If we do this right, we, we should be able to connect the rest of the building in a way that seems, seems like they belong together, and I think everybody in the facility will feel like it's a win.
Okay, Mr. Cavalier.
And Dr. Benson, thank you for saying that, because that's the first time I've heard any of that. And so if y'all could put some numbers and some words behind that, and in two weeks, if we take this up again, I'm sure it'll be okay. That, that, see how simple that was? Everybody's happy now.
All right, Mr. Cohen.
And if, correct me if I'm wrong, the $24 million idea was to make the entirety of the building comparable to other things, whereas what we're now looking at is just the older section is going to be looked at, and then the other parts will be dealt with the lighting and things of that nature. But we're no longer talking about the $24 million type, the entire structure. So again, I've been privy to this, because my board member and I, you know, communicate, but, and I've been trying to throw it out there, but people like to see something writing because of the, the gap between what was said and what is being talked about now.
And Mr. Cohen, we certainly can provide a narrative, but we're, we're going to need an engineering architectural firm to come in here and, and really give us the, the detailed information that I think the board will want. And I think that's what Mr. Foley was getting at in terms of, it's, we've got another year. We need to do that work, bring that back to the board, so you can see what that, that cost is, but that, that's our, our target in any case.
Right, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So what, what, I think what they're getting at is that the previous iterations of lists had parking lots and other things in it. And so they're looking at what they have been given in the past, and I think that's why they would like to see something, so they see what the, the priority is. If, for example, what I understand is that you're doing something in the cafeteria slash gym this summer, that used to be thought of as being part of the, you know, the renovation, that's, I think that's what people need to wrap their head around, is the difference between the then and the now. And so even if there's not a specific, and I don't think anybody here is going to say, on, on June 5th or June 19th, you said it would X million, and it's X plus $1, they'll have a conniption. I think what they want to know is that it's not going to be parking lots, it's, it's not going to be something that's not, you know, it's just going to be painting or something that, they need to see that depth, which they have not been given to yet.
Okay, and I know Ms. Mauer has a question for you, Dr. Benson.
So with all of the other renovations that we did at the other schools, we pulled the kids out for a year. We had the benefit of that, and housing them in Stafford Middle School. So from a timing perspective, I see a $9 million renovation in one year. Can you spend $9 million on a renovation over one summer?
So what we would, it wouldn't be one summer. What we would need to do is create some swing space at the school.
Okay.
Okay, but, but not an entire move everybody out in order to, you know, to accomplish this. We were very fortunate, the last time we did an elementary renovation, we, we had space at Stafford Middle School. We could, we could house the entire elementary school in Stafford. We don't, we don't have that luxury at, at Ferry Farm. But we will need a large, we will need a small swing space in order to do that work, that, which would probably impact six or seven classrooms.
Okay, so, so, and that gets back to my larger question. So you're planning on, if you do it within that space, you're going to do it all within one year, and it's feasible? Because that's how it's presented in the budget. So, so if it's presented, you can spend $10 million in one year?
Yes, ma'am, I, I understand. I, I don't have a degree in engineering, and I'm not an architect. So we need to get our folk, we need to get somebody in here to do that analysis.
Okay.
And then we can come back with, with more information, because we, we don't know. One of the things that we're curious about is whether or not we might be able to go up at the school. We need somebody to come and tell us whether or not we can do that or not.
All right, Ms. Shelton.
Dr. Benson, I'm sorry, I don't think this is for you, but you can stand there. No, you can stand there, because I enjoy looking at you. Actually, okay, not that, okay, not that. My apologies to you publicly, not that.
Well, I will certainly remember my last meeting with you.
Yes, you will. Yes, you will. I really wanted to talk about a couple of things. One of them is, is that when we looked at the growth models, and one of our constituents came out today, and she talked about how the growth is going to be in Hartwood now. We talked earlier about we, we need to build this $2 million water tank down at Centerport, because we need all this additional growth that's going in that area, and it's by right. And so we planned that. And so my concern, and this is, this is why I said it's not necessarily directed to you, it's to our planning staff, is my concern is that's not what we're planning in this next 10 years to put schools. We're planning on putting a water tower there, we're planning on doing these other things, but we're not addressing where our major growth is.
So, Ms. Shelton, and, you know, one of the things that, that we'll have to have conversation about in terms of high school number six is where would that high school be located? And, and is it possible that it should be in the southern end of the, of the county? And might it be possible to get a piece of property that would be large enough to co-locate an elementary school, much in the same way that we did Mountain View and Margaret Brent?
Yes, our budget right now has that high school number six going into the current property. It's not even placed out. And one more thing, ma'am, is that bothers me, is that, have you guys not noticed how congested Garrisonville Road is? I mean, come on. And so one of my real concerns, as you guys know, is congestion. And I could talk to Mr. Dudenheffer all day about congestion. So one of the things I don't like about the proposed budget, and what we're looking at is Fredericksburg Christian School, we don't need any more schools or school buses on Garrisonville Road. And so when I looked at that, and I love the fact that we went through this significant amount of detail to get an understanding of what is the right size, and we found out that Fredericksburg Christian School isn't the right size. We found out that we would be out of space in one to two years. So one of the things that we've done and added to it is another addition to that. And my underlying concern is still the congestion. And I know you can't answer that, but I do not like this build out of Fredericksburg Christian School just because of the congestion issue, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Snellings.
Thank you, Dr. Benson, but I have a question from Ms. Light.
Thank you, Dr. Benson.
I, I agree with Ms. Shelton, there is congestion in Hartwood, there is congestion throughout the county. Hartwood is not the only district in this county that's experiencing a great deal of growth. It's happening everywhere. My question is, did the school board approve their portion of the CIP?
Yes, sir, they did.
They did. Do you know what the vote was?
It was six to one.
Six to one, thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Any other questions about the capital improvement plan?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Foley.
Just want to clarify, any other information that the board feels is necessary before you act on this? I don't, I don't believe that the information that you'll have in two weeks will be much different, or give you any more degree of certainty about the ultimate cost of these projects than you have today. And certainly, if you want to defer action, that's your prerogative. I just wanted to be sure that you understand that we have come a tremendous way from where we were last year. The plan that we started with did not have the justification that it needed, and that was necessary to justify a number of the projects. The policy that you established last year before we started this CIP process raised the bar considerably. And a lot of folks who said that this process has been terrible. And I'm telling you, it's terrible, it was terrible and difficult, because we did not have the justification we needed. And at this point, I think we have scoured through this thing to the point that what you have in front of you is the best thing you're going to have, until we get those studies and engineering reports that your own policy requires in this CIP. So I would just say that I think we've gotten as far as we can without the additional work that's going to be needed, that will be available to you in the next few months as we start this CIP process all over again. With that said, I think Dr. Benson can come back on Ferry Farm on some scope questions, but he has a whole study, and then he'll have to give you different numbers. And then there'll be questions about why those numbers are different. So I just throw that caution out to you. Obviously, it's your prerogative to delay the, the decision on this. Just wanted to clarify that we have studies for the court underway. There are actually studies for the capacity of a school for pre-K that are underway. There's going to be studies for Ferry Farm, and we've, we've got a lot more that we've got to do to get this CIP to the point where you'll have almost all your questions answered as we start the process, because the studies will be complete. They won't be complete in the next two weeks. But with that said, I just wanted to say that this CIP process is difficult, and has, is, has been a tremendous step forward, based on the policy you all adopted last summer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Foley. And with that, what is the will of the board? We have our 18-49 in front of us. Is there a motion?
Well, I can't support it today, but I can support it in two weeks if the information that I asked for comes back. And so with that in mind, I, I make a motion to defer 18-49 for two weeks.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any comments on the deferral? Ms. Mauer?
I'm going to vote for the deferral, but I want to clarify, I'm still not certain I'm supportive of the CIP. So whereas Mr. Cavalier said he could support in two weeks, if I make a motion for the deferral, I'm, I'm, I'm still not hitting the "I believe" button, and, and a number of reasons. Number of reasons, number one, affordability. I'm very, very, very concerned about affordability. Number two, there's no transportation money in it, and that's, that's, that's one thing that we need to talk about. And, and there was something said, and this is where I'm going to get to number three, is, is we'll find out how much money we have, and then we'll make it work within that parameter. It's an interesting concept, because here, it's, it's in this current CIP, it's a wish list of, this is, you know, we're going to get all of this, and at the top number, this is what it's going to cost. But if we could actually look at it from the perspective of, this is what we can afford, and we're going to work within that number, that now gives me considerable pause. Because, and, and one of the things is, is it's this courthouse number. I have a very difficult time with this courthouse number when we've got schools that are going to be over capacity, we have roads that need to be fixed, and, and so, yeah, that's just kind of where I stand.
Okay, Mr. Snellings.
I agree with Ms. Mauer, but I think we need to understand one thing. The most important letter in this CIP is P. It is a plan, that's all it is. We can change at any time, at any moment, we don't have to do any of this stuff. It is a plan, period.
All right, Mr. Cohen.
This is incumbent on the schools, quite honestly. It's on you to provide the information, again, or repeatedly, that this body needs of what it has to do to get this done. And I, and it's, quite honestly, there's a lot of, I, I agree with Mr. Snellings, it's a plan. We don't have a specific site for the new Hartwood, but it's in here. We don't have a site theoretically for the new high school, but it's in here. So I don't mind voting today to put money in for Ferry Farm, because, I won't use the word I want to use, it is needed, and it has been dilly-dallyed for a decade. And I don't understand why there is this reticence about just being forthright about what the needs are and how we're going to address them, and that is very frustrating. And to have us here looking at deferring it for two more weeks because board members need a specific list when they have been begging for lists of specific items besides parking lots and things. And when we met and we made the comment about the parking lot, what, what was that, two weeks ago, Ms. Mauer, three weeks ago? We still don't have anything official to help us, and it's, the...
Okay.
Words fail me. So I may well go for a deferral, because we need that information to get more votes, but gosh darn it, this is just disgusting.
Okay, Ms., Mr. Dudenheffer down there.
Well, it shouldn't come as a surprise to anyone about my thoughts on the CIP. And as it stands now, whether it's similar to this now or in two weeks, I won't be supporting it. I, I sit here and look at the spreadsheet, and we, and I listened to Ms. Mauer's comments, and what she said was accurate. We have front-loaded a courthouse for $55 million, and we're still talking about schools that won't be ready by the time we're over capacity as we move along. And we haven't put any money, reasonable money in transportation, but $55 million in 2020 and 2021 into a courthouse. I find that to be a poor allocation of money, and I'm going to ask the county staff to work on a plan that does not front-load that, that project, and that allows us to move forward. Some of the school, the elementary school number 18 and high school number six, to where at least we're not overcrowding the schools in time. We're not overcrowding the courthouse. The new courthouse builds six circuit courts, we only have three circuit court judges. I mean, we have time to do that, and we have plenty of time. I wasn't here when they decided to put this as a priority, and I can tell you, since day one, I haven't supported moving this thing up and accelerating that. If we have to wait, I don't want to wait, have the kids and the commuters wait, I want to have the courts wait, and the people associated with that. I'm sorry, they probably won't like that, and, well, that's kind of how it goes. But I will try and figure out a plan to propose in two weeks, and I'm going to vote for the deferral, that backloads the courthouse and allows us to move forward with the other projects that are so critical and are so much in need right now, not just a few judges who can exert their pressure on this board to do things. And I think they're getting away with it. So I will support a deferral, but I would like to say that I'm going to come forward with a, a proposal in two weeks to do something different than what we're doing here.
Ms. Shelton.
We can't afford this. And so I agree with you, Mr. Dudenheffer, that I would like to see us bring forward elementary school number 18. I think we've seen many scenarios that have proven that that is a really better value for us. That's not currently what's in the, the plan before us, but putting all that aside, moving those things around, changing those dollars, just looking at the bottom line, we cannot afford what's in front of this. So unless we change that total value and decrease it to something that's less affordable, so I don't have to go to people and go, "I'm sorry, I just raised your taxes and kept it at 99 cents, and now, sorry, I'm going to raise it another four and a half," and that's guaranteed without even accounting for any risk. I mean, what happens if the economy tanks? I mean, there's so many different things that we cannot predict, that, yes, Ms. Light, I get the fact that we're not going to take us down to that level of, of concern, because that's a, you know, we do have requirements from the Commonwealth of Virginia. But I'm more concerned that we're just cutting our, our risk too tight, and I can't accept that.
Ms. Mauer.
So, Mr. Snellings, you know what, you're absolutely right, this is a plan. And, and the plan that we have before us, we are planning to raise taxes by four cents. And the plan that we have before us is that we're planning not to add additional monies to transportation. Because this isn't just bond-funded... Because this isn't just bond-funded programs that we're looking at in this CIP. We're looking at the cash that we have available, the profits we have available, and, you know, everything is thrown in here. And we do not have a line for transportation. And I cannot plan to address our roads. And so in two weeks, we need to have a line item for some sort of transportation funding. And I know, no, Mr. Dudenheffer, I know you wanted that half cent, but I also, I also was very clear that we need to put money towards transportation, and it needs to be in the plan. And so if that means that we have to also plan to ensure that people are living within the means and we're cutting costs in some way, shape, or form, then we got to do that too. But right now, this CIP as it stands is missing one significant element that we're not planning for, and it's also not affordable.
Just a clarification, Madam Chair.
Yes.
We did, since you all gave some direction the last time, added line 50. And again, I'm sorry you all could debate whether that's enough money or not, but...
I'm sorry, did I miss it? Am I, am I going to, am I going to have egg on my face?
It's a year fund, a million dollars a year.
Right.
Yeah, it's...
It's underfunded.
Madam Chair, she's right that we didn't have that in there before. I just wanted to clarify that we had...
Okay. And also, we also have a million dollars coming from the schools every year.
That is it.
That's it?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, right. So I guess the concern I have about the CIP is very similar to my colleagues. We all just talked about this up in infrastructure, but there weren't very many comments that were made, so I guess you guys all saved them for, at the dais. So I, you know, I mean, just so the public understands, what has happened here is we've looked at the purchase of the Fredericksburg Christian School, which is 10 to 12 million dollars, then the renovations on top of that. And then you add in the courthouse. And when you add in the courthouse, that affects everything, especially because it's $55 million. It's not 12 or 15 million dollars. And that's, and I guess the one reason I can't support the CIP is because of the courthouse, but also I cannot only put $10 million towards Ferry Farm. We will, I don't believe we will ever come back and finish that school in a second phase because it doesn't happen like that. There will always be, in a growing community, other projects that are going to crowd it out. And, you know, I appreciate Dr. Benson coming up to the podium and talking about the dollars, but I think in reality, we're going to need more money for that project. And so the question is for staff and Tom Foley, and Andrea, I know you and staff have put a tremendous amount of energy effort into this document. And as you said, it's a planning document. In two weeks, what's really going to change? I'm not convinced anything's really going to change unless we move the courthouse way out to the right and cut that in half. And is that, is that a feasible project? Because right now, I can tell by my board that the will of the board is not there to support the CIP.
That's correct. And I appreciate that the schools can hopefully bring some information back from Mr. Cavalier that will be helpful. But on the bigger question of the plan including the need for more revenue equivalent to four and a half cents over the next five years, which is correct, there are just too many projects in there. We are within debt capacity, our ability to borrow, which is a challenge we used to have, but now we don't. So if we cannot overcome those things, we'll have to make some reductions to this CIP in order to put it in a position where those things can be resolved. However, there's some transportation money in here. I don't think it's enough to get the votes of some members. And so we are in a little bit of a dilemma. We can come back and in two weeks, with the information that Mr. Cavalier has asked for, the question is, what else should we do in order to put this in a position? I will say to you, and it has been emphasized over and over by even some board members, this is a planning document. It's not an appropriation. But I wouldn't disagree with Ms. Mauer's comments that it's a plan with some things in it that are important for you to be aware of. I need some direction to give you a plan that you can adopt. I will say to you that adopting a plan is pretty important because it's a part of our financial policies, and we are going to the bond rating agencies, which does cost us money depending on how they view any borrowings that we do. So I'm not sure what the clear answer is without adjusting some projects. There's no more revenue to come into the plan, so it's an expenditure issue if there's not comfort with approving it.
Yes. Mr. Cavalier?
Well, and Mr. Foley, I know that Mr. Cohen and I sat down with you individually, well, two of us with you and staff. And my only concern was what I stated today, and I thought that was simple to do, so I don't think that's a big deal. But some of these other issues that are coming up now are game changers. And so I don't know how you're going to come up with seven different CIPs basic, based on everybody appears self-interest, it seems like. You know, if you put in one item, you have to take out another. So it's not, it's not a simple process. I don't envy you, but I would have thought that these issues would have come up in the meetings with you if you had a chance to meet with everybody. I don't know if you have.
And I did. And I know that the board members were taking in the final plan, so this is the moment of truth, obviously, and we've revealed some things that are concerns to board members. I would say to the board that it is a, it is a planning document. It means we do have some challenges on the horizon. We looked at the five-year financial plan, and it had challenges in it as well. This is a growing community. Growth is an issue. It has its biggest impact on infrastructure needs, and I think all of us are aware of that. I, I think you can, I think you can adopt this CIP if you have enough information without making the adjustments with the idea that you're going to immediately go into trying to tackle the challenges that this plan has in it. That includes revenues, but it's also, this court is a work in progress. Unless we do something in the next couple of weeks to reduce some of these projects so that we get at whatever it is you're trying to accomplish. If that is to not have the four and a half cents in the five years, then that would be the target we would work towards. We could give you scenarios on that. But none of that impact is going to affect you in the next two fiscal years. So you have two fiscal years to have an impact on the CIP to be sure that it doesn't cause taxes to have to go up or some other revenue source. It's all based on projections as well, as you all know. So, Madam Chair, I don't have any particular solution here. I guess I'm looking for direction as to whether you all want to make adjustments to this or just get the information, have it back before you. And hopefully, there'll be four of you that can support it.
All right. Mr. Dudenheffer?
I think what we've heard, I think there's an awful lot of people up here that believe that we, we have higher priorities than a courthouse and that a plan that pushes that out. Now, I've heard this, it's a plan from several people up here, but the problem is, is that the courthouse, which is the biggest expenditure that could possibly be moved, is in 2020 and 2021, which is in the immediate planning horizon. So we are going to expend a significant amount of money on the courthouse in the next year or two as we start to move forward. So I think that we, I personally would like to see a way that we can, we can push the courthouse out five or six more years and move up and address our transportation issues. And I think that that can be done. I don't know if any of my colleagues agree, but that's really the only way at this point that I'm going to support the CIP, so...
Mr. Cavalier?
I think you need to take into consideration, though, probably the only thing on this current CIP that's been considered longer than the courthouse is Ferry Farm Elementary School, which I hate to say, but that's true. And, you know, I, we can't just, I mean, the CIP can't be just all school projects. I mean, I guess it could be, but let's face it, we do have other needs in this community too. And so we're trying to be as fair as possible, you know, and maybe timing is an issue here that we can look at. But, you know, removing the courthouse from the CIP, I don't think is reasonable to do, just like I don't think removing Ferry Farm Elementary School renovation is a reasonable thing to do. As long as I'm, and I've seen lots of data on the courthouse, I haven't seen anything really to speak of on Ferry Farm. That's why I asked for that today. I think I can be persuaded to vote for that, but I won't sacrifice the courthouse because, you know, we have some other perceived need.
Ms. Shelton?
I have an alternative. Why don't we sacrifice the Fredericksburg Christian School and pull that out? We've had scenarios before that shown that if we pulled forward elementary school number 18, that we would still be able to provide for our local communities to have schools where they are, and the children can go where they are, as opposed to busing them to a north and south pre-K. What do you think of that?
Mr. Snellings?
I don't like that idea, and I'll tell you why. As the lady said, Hartwood is busting at the seams. We're going to have outside trailers at Hartwood this year. I've been told by the school board, if we buy Fredericksburg Christian, it will relieve those classrooms, 23 elementary classrooms, and then they'll be able to redistrict. I do not like trailers for any, I know they're nice, some of them are.
They're learning totages.
Learning whatever. But the reality is, I'm concerned about safety. I mean, they're nice, they look great, but those kids are in a separate building, and I do not like that, especially in an elementary environment. So yes, Fredericksburg Christian gets my vote because of that. We have got to have relief in Hartwood, period.
And just so the public knows, the children that we're looking at moving into the Christian School have a two-hour bus ride, an hour one way, each way. And these children are threes, fours, and five-year-olds. Ms. Mauer? And then, this might be the last comment, and then we're going to vote on the deferral.
Okay. And in two weeks from now, this might be a recommendation. What we haven't done, because there's, there's a lot of people that have feelings about the different building blocks of this CIP, maybe do, and I'm just throwing this out there, an up or down vote on some of these larger items under discussion, you know? I see some consensus on Ferry Farm. I see some consensus on, you know, the million dollars for, you know, finishing off Monqueer Elementary School. There are items that, that aren't leading to much that is in the way of debate, but the courthouse is up for debate. And it might be good to, to have an up or down vote on some of the larger items, which would give staff direction.
Well, we could do that now.
I have never seen anything like that done before, and I think that's a bad idea. Individual vote on CIP, everything could go down. That's, that's just not a, not a good idea.
Interesting idea. Okay. With that, Mr. Foley, do you have something else to add?
I guess the only, the only question is whether you would like us to bring something back that achieves something in particular. We can get more information. But if, if this is within our debt capacity, so there's no change needed for that, is there a desire for this to be looked at in terms of how we would eliminate the need for any additional revenue in the future? I can tell you, after the first five years, it's more than four and a half cents because of the high school and the elementary school that come after year five. So...
So here's the challenge for them. We just had an infrastructure meeting with not a lot of input on the, on the CIP upstairs or on the courthouse. I'm sorry, it wasn't the CIP, it was on the courthouse project. So we do not have another infrastructure meeting until July 10th. So we need to give staff direction at this point in time.
Yeah. Well, and one thing, and I guess I'm taking, I forget what, by now, I forget whether it was Mr. Snellings or Ms. Mauer who keep saying the line of, "We'll work with whatever they give us." I forget which. But, and I was talking to Mr. Cavalier, maybe if that is the mentality of the schools, is that if we give them a certain chunk of money, they'll make it work. And knowing that from a meeting with Mr. Ren, they're going to be looking at a new floor plan for the high school anyways, I mean, maybe those numbers, if those numbers were adjusted for that and the elementary school 18 were adjusted, that would address the people's concern about tax rates because that would lower that. Since those are numerous years out into the future, that gives them time to look at the various plans and their thought processes and maybe make that work better since they have numerous years to make it work. It's just an idea to deal with that. But again, I mean, and I won't throw up my idea of the courthouse again, but there are different ways we can look at certain things.
Madam Chair, the only other suggestion I would have would be between now and the next meeting, perhaps staff could work with the chair and vice chair about some approach that might get us, get us through that. I don't mean changing projects, but the question might be, if you approve the CIP with a number of caveats about required actions that need to be taken, there may be some other way to work through this. I don't believe that a work session with the board members between now and two weeks from now, that would require us to go through the, probably the CIP justification process and all the data all over again. And we may need to do that, but that's probably not something that's going to get done quickly. I think we're probably going to need some series of information and work sessions. And there's studies underway that are going to better define that as well. So it's clear that there's going to be a deferral on this. I'm not sure it's clear what we would do on that date in terms of whether it gets adopted or not, but I think there needs to be probably some conversation that perhaps could be done with the leadership of the board to come up with a way we might work through that.
Okay. That seems like that's reasonable, Mr. Foley. Is the board comfortable with that?
Yes.
Mr. Snellings?
Ms. Light, when do we go to the bond rating agencies? When do we have to have this prepared, ready, and signed off on?
Typically, we go in the fall, the early fall. The other thing that may hold us up that we might want to consider is that we have to have a public hearing on BPSA, and we have to do that by September to participate with a fall borrow.
All right. With that, we've had robust conversation on this. If you could please cast your vote for the deferral of R-18-49. Tally the vote, please. That item was deferred until June 19th. All right. Next item is item number 25. Kathy Baker, Assistant Director of Planning and Zoning. She's here today to give us a presentation to discuss with the board the current round of purchase of development rights applications.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have the computer, please. Here we go. Okay. All right. I'm going to talk about the 2017 purchase of development rights, PDR application round. The board adopted the PDR program in 2007. We've since had two application rounds. With that, we've acquired easements on six properties and 450 acres with a total development rights retired of 115. As you know, the application rounds are based on the ability, availability of funds. We opened a new round in 2017, and that has resulted in 11 new applications. Through the PDR process, landowners are required to submit an application, it's a voluntary application, by a specified deadline. And then the properties are ranked using this criteria that's spelled out in Chapter 22A of the county code. The PDR committee then reviews these scores and rankings and makes the recommendations to the board based solely on the rankings. And then the board recommends a property... to the board based solely on the rankings, and then the board recommends the properties for additional easement acquisition, and it is typically based on the funding. As of April, had 992,000 available in PDR funding. The, I use that date because that's when the information was presented and discussed at the Community and Economic Development Committee. There would be additional rollback funds by the end of this month. There's also the potential for 50% matching funds through various state and federal agencies. I'll note that at your Community and Economic Development Committee meeting, you all had recommended that we actually formalize a policy of 50% match and only the county putting up 50% of those funds. That's something that's being worked out through the financial policies. The finance and budget department are working that and would take that through the FAB committee for.
Ms. Mauer?
One of the other holes in the policy that I find very concerning, and I've brought this up, so I'm not going to, on more than one occasion, so I'm not going to beat this dead horse, however, one of the things that really concerned me is that we spent PDR money on the purchase of a property that did not go through the application process. So if we are changing the policy, I think we need to close that loophole. It was, and the reason this is important to me is because in the next round of applications, there were Acquia properties that were submitted in that next round of applications, and so that property that was identified and designated and purchased outside of the application process should have been ranked and racked and stacked with all the other applications, even though that money was specified for Acquia. So if you're bringing a new policy, you know, forth on PDR, I would like some language to close that loophole as well.
Okay, and I think that's something that would have to go through pretty much a new process of looking at the umbrella land conservation program in general. PDR is a piece of that overall land conservation program, so there are differences that are going to occur. So yes, if you all wish to do that, then we will have to work through that process.
But we have a policy about expending funds, which is, you know, we take in applications, we rank them and everything else, but in this particular instance, I just want to make sure that if we have a policy on PDR funds, and if you're telling me we don't have a policy on PDR funds, that somebody could come in and say, hey, my buddy down the street, which, you know, in this particular case, it was the donor of one of our board members, my buddy down the street would like to, you know, be outside of the PDR application process, I find that disconcerting.
Mr. Snelling?
Let me clarify, Ms. Mauer, make sure we say a former board member.
Yes, sir. So what the board is to consider through this process is prioritizing these 2017 applications for easement acquisition, if that's the desire, and also to authorize matching grant applications. We do have a first matching grant application due July 1st, and that's through the Quantico Space Buffering Program, which we call the REPI Program there, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. The next application would be at the end of August, end of August, for additional source of federal funds through the USDA. We do have two state funding programs, the Department of Agriculture, Virginia Department of Agriculture, which that's typically later in September before they announce their application rounds. I did hear just late yesterday that the Virginia Land Conservation Foundation will not have funds now available until next summer based on their budget. So with that being said, then what we're looking at is the available funding, and then the board may wish to consider additional properties that are on the list that there aren't funds for in the future when funds would become available. This is the map of the applications, the, they're all on there. The ones shown in red and I've labeled, so you see the five properties in the Hartwood District, one property in the Acquia District, and then five properties in the George Washington District.
Just for the record, I'd like to let the public know that the Shelton property is not Cindy Shelton on our board.
That is correct. Or any relative thereof.
Yes.
And just to briefly talk about the ranking criteria, how the properties are scored, there are five categories with a total of 270 points. The categories, the two higher categories that are ranked heavier are the quality of the parcel, the productivity capability for farming purposes, for agricultural purposes, and then the likelihood of development, the ability of that property to be turned into residential, be converted to residential subdivisions. The circumstances supporting agriculture are things such as your adjacency to other farms or other open space easements. And then the last two categories are sort of your value-added categories, your environmental and cultural resources that are on the property. This does show the overall list of applications as they were ranked. According to the scores, you'll notice in the far right-hand column, the total score is out of that 270 points. The very bottom line, you'll see the totals, 654 acres out of all the applications, 173 development rights. The total cost, if you were to purchase easements on all of these, would be 4.3 million with the county cost at 50% of that at 2.1 million. When you all discussed this at the Community and Economic Development Committee, you had asked for different scenarios based on the amount of funding at 992,000. This first scenario was talked about, this was starting at the rankings by the PDR committee. You'll notice the first three properties, and then it skips over to the fifth property because the fourth one couldn't be accommodated within the existing funding.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Baker, memory serves me, the Moore property isn't George Washington, that's the one up in Acquia, isn't it?
There were actually, the owners, Moore on both of them.
Okay.
This Moore is actually the one off of New Hope Church Road.
Okay, thank you.
We changed the name to Petley for the other one, just as one of the other owners for less confusion.
Thank you.
You'll see just in the comments section here, that you'll see the number three Seacrest property, it does have a purchase contract with a developer that's valid through September. The PDR committee, when they went through their rankings, they just wanted to note that to the board of supervisors. And then the Beach property, the one at the bottom, does show that this one is one of the properties located within that Quantico Base Buffering Target area. So this would, this scenario would have four easements and, at a cost of 987,000. The second scenario was to prioritize beginning with those three properties that have extenuating circumstances, the one with the purchase contract developer, and then the two properties located within the REPI area. The reason the REPI area is important, there is possibility of further maximizing those funds by requesting additional state funds that could maximize those dollars. So this, again, is your top, the three with the extenuating circumstances, and then proceeding from the top of the list. But again, because the number one property takes up so much of the funding, then you actually get down to the number eight property before you can work in the numbers logistically. The third scenario that was discussed was just ranking from the lowest to highest cost, and you can see the numbers there, and that does include those three properties with the extenuating circumstances. We talked about the one request from the committee.
Ms. Baker, when we, when you go, yeah, back to that slide, I understand that somebody asked for this, but, and I, I understand it, but I kind of ask myself, why would you go from lowest to highest, and what's the whole purpose of the criteria and the whole process that we had? This kind of defeats that process, in my mind.
And again, that was, that was just at the request of the committee, coming up with different scenarios that maximize the money, what you're getting for that, the being able to apply for grant funding that we know is more readily available because of the timeline. The, as I said, the committee and staff rank it according to your scores. That's our sole purpose, and going through those rankings, discussing it with the applicants, and getting that confirmation. So, you know, rather, I mean, the starting point would be the number one, and that is our recommendation, but we're pointing out these other options because that was requested from the board.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to go back one more?
No, I actually found it in the back of my package. I just wanted to.
If you go back one slide, you extinguish more developer rights on option number one than do option number two. That's what I was looking at.
So again, these scenarios, we're just working out logistically how those properties could be acquired. The board can choose to do any order they want, they can choose to, you know, begin the list and come back at a future date as we get matching funds. The issue with the matching funds is they are project property specific, so in order to apply for those, we need to know those properties that we're going to be working through. So it's all about timing and just working through the process. So just leave you with, the additional change the committee asked for was considering changes to the ordinance in future application rounds, things such as the proximity to infrastructure and things like that. So that is something the board can ask the committee to take, the PDR committee to take a look at. We would note that it would not affect these applications because they've already been scored under the existing ordinance, so we can certainly do that at the board's request. But at this time, we're just asking for your thoughts and recommendations. If you were to make a recommendation today or at a future meeting, we would come back with an actual resolution that would recommend how we would proceed with these, with the properties.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Kathy Baker? All right, so we will have this on the June 19th agenda, if that is the will of the board? Okay?
For new business, and then we'll pick which plan and whatnot?
Correct. Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Baker. All right. Item number 26, Garrisonville District Supervisor Mark Dudenhaffer requested that this item be placed on the agenda, and it's a discussion about his concerns regarding Airbnbs in Stafford County. So with that, Mark, I'll let you voice your concerns.
Can Mike or Jeff or somebody that's proficient in the state law, please come forward so These things are popping up all, you know, all over the place, and we've been dealing with them, and the issue is, it's like having a hotel room in your neighborhood, that you don't know who's the traffic driving in and out, who's getting in and out of the car. You know, we've had issues where they park on people's, other people's driveways, they are in people's front yards or in no parking zones. I mean, we, you know, there's been a case, a couple, where people have been rude that have come in to do this. So I don't think, I think, and I, you know, get comments from my colleagues, but I don't think this is a situation that's conducive to good neighborhoods where people feel safe. And I think that it's our requirement to do whatever we can to make them feel safe. So I guess my question is, we've been dealing with these, with zoning violations, is there anything else that we can do within the law to make this issue less egregious on the citizens in this county?
Mr. Dudenhaffer and board members, let me start off by saying, businesses like Airbnb's are not permitted in our zoning code, so they are in violation of the county ordinance, and we pursue them on a complaint basis. We do know that there's, when you check Airbnb and similar websites, there's multiple listings of people operating these types of activities in the county, and oftentimes they're absentee landowners. They don't necessarily live on the property, they rent their house out on a daily basis. In looking at various planning documents I've read throughout the nation and a number of webinars I've listened to, it seems that most jurisdictions that want to allow them have a licensing requirement that, and requires inspections, but that would be a whole new program for Stafford County if we wanted to pursue that kind of activity.
Is that allowed by the state law? For us to license them and collect taxes from them, like any hotel?
Well, most localities have a business license tax to begin with, so they end up being registered as a business. Unfortunately, in Stafford, we don't have that mechanism. We'd have to check with the county attorney's office to see if we can use some other similar mechanism to require a licensing and inspection process.
Is there anything we can do as part of the zoning violation, like put a lien on their house to get the attention of these absentee landlords or something like that?
Mr. Dudenhaffer, in the present setup with our zoning violations, basically, we cite the party, they have 30 days to remedy the issue. If they don't, we can pursue court action. That takes a while to get through the court docket, and it can be a long drawn-out process. There was discussion amongst the board a number of years ago about looking at civil penalties a little bit differently and where we might be able to hand out tickets, but that would have to apply for all zoning-type violations if we were going to pursue that type of avenue.
I don't know if anyone else is having these issues, but I've had three different issues at this point now, and the complaints come to me from, like the next-door neighbor or the resident who say, you know, that the people are aggressive, they're loud, you know, they're just not conducive to the neighborhood, so.
In these neighborhoods, Mark, do you have HOA covenants in some cases?
In most, the ones that I've heard, have HOA covenants, but most of the HOA covenants, they were put down long before this was ever an issue, so it's not addressed in the, you know, in the code. We do have a lot of absentee landlords, people, military or whatever, who've moved away, but they rent usually on a long-term basis. I think we've got, what, a six-month requirement for them not to be considered short-term or?
Mr. Dudenhaffer, I believe it's 90, after 90 days, you're considered to be a resident as far as our zoning ordinance goes. There are those types of situations. Again, the county really doesn't regulate you renting your house out to somebody for a long-term lease. It's different when it's overnight stay or short-term stays, and that's where we get into the situation where you're competing with hotels and the occupancy tax. That was something that's been discussed at the state level with the General Assembly is, should we allow Airbnb's and these types of activities, and how are they going to be taxed, and the reporting back to the locality and the state, and that's been a big debate for the last several years.
It has. What constitutes compliance? If you send them a letter and you've asked them, or you've basically informed them they're in violation, do they just have to, what do they have to do to be back in compliance?
Well, Mr. Dudenhaffer, they'd have to sign an affidavit that they're not doing that type of activity, and we'd also periodically inspect to see if we see anything that looks unusual. And sometimes it's difficult to enforce these types of things because we don't know if someone's now, instead of using a daily rental, maybe they have a lease with somebody for a year, you know, and a new tenant moves in. So that's where we may get a call from a neighbor and have to investigate and find out that indeed they're lawfully.
I don't know. I have a problem in my area where this is popping up a little more and more. So far, I think we have been able to pretty much keep a handle on it through the notifications of the zoning problems, but.
But that could be a vicious circle where, you know, they mitigate it and then.
Yeah, they could come in compliance for a week and then, you know, start the whole thing all over again.
Yes, and we've, staff has observed in one instance where an owner owned a piece of property in one neighborhood and was using it as an Airbnb. We cited them for a violation, and they owned another property in another neighborhood and was doing it at that location. So sometimes people will continue the business, but at different locations.
Well, and even though the rest of us may not have issues right now, we have some, we just don't know they exist, they're not problems yet, but they're, you know, three years ago, there were like five Airbnb's in Stafford County. There are a lot now. So do we know what our peer localities are doing? How are they addressing that, this issue?
Ms. Bomke, we've not really delved into that very closely. We have contemplated bringing this issue to the Community and Economic Development Committee for further discussion and may be on a future agenda if the board so desires, because we're not really sure from the board's perspective if this is really a major problem or not, that needs some sort of legislative change. that needs some sort of legislative change or policy change for enforcement.
Well, we could wait till it gets to be a big problem. I mean, or we can try and attack it now with a policy where people really understand that there are some hard consequences to doing this. Do we, we don't go out and do Google searches on these things, do we, for any street in Stafford County? I mean, are we aggressive in trying to identify them or do we wait strictly for complaints?
Supervisor Dudenhaffer, our current process is we are on complaint basis for violations. We have two inspectors that cover the whole county, deal with grass, trash, those kinds of issues.
Well, I would like to see if we could get the staff to come back to the CEDC with some recommendations. And answering your question, what are some of the peer localities? What, you know, any...
Yeah, because if we're not dealing with this, we're going to have to deal with it at some point in time. So we might as well, in my mind, be a little proactive and start the process.
Yeah, and I was involved in some of the discussions at the state level, which were, I mean, you get people where it's not absolutely a problem and they're attacked by the business community. So they say, yeah, this is not a problem. We should have more business. And I mean, but they don't, they don't have the issue. It's the same argument with the proffer bill. It's not a problem for them, so it's easy for them to be kind of bought off, I guess, and dealt with this. So this is another one of those issues. And it's kind of like, you know, the same with Uber. You know, I mean, you got the Uber drivers and the taxi drivers and, you know, and there's this constant battle at the state legislature. But I can tell you, if we don't, if we don't deal with it now, we'll deal with it in the future and we're all going to hear complaints from people, I think.
So, would it be the will of the Board to bring this to a CEDC meeting when the staff has additional information? Okay, Ms. Mauer?
One item, I know that Mr. Mioski has done a considerable amount of research. This somehow touches his area, so let's make sure that we communicate with him and involve him in the process.
Yes, ma'am. And again, that goes back to the resident occupancy tax for hotels. The, these types of facilities, Airbnb's, using that term, have had issues as to who pays the taxes and where does it go? Does it go to the county? Does it go to the state? That's some of the discussion that's been had at the state level.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. All right, we have one last item. We have an item in your add-on folder. It's Proposed Resolution R-18-157, which authorizes the county administrator to advertise a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission to consider amending the county's zoning ordinance regarding shared parking in the PT&amp;D zone. Mr. Smith, could you please provide the Board with details about this item?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mike Smith, Deputy County Administrator. We were looking at our parking and drive aisles as we talked about earlier. And there's another portion of the zoning ordinance, the PT&amp;D, the Planned Traditional Neighborhood Development Zoning District. This is a more urban type of development, and so this urban development can share parking. And so we're looking at our shared parking, comparing it to some more urban communities to see if our parking restrictions are adequate or if we should reduce them. And as we were doing this, we had two things that came up. First, we had our five-year review by DEQ, who suggested that we try to reduce our impervious area by reducing our parking requirements and by capping our parking requirements. A lot of retail areas, we have a minimum number of parking, but they like to have additional parking so they can have plenty for their customers. And so they asked us to put a maximum number on that. And that's one of the things we're looking at with the parking and drive aisles that's going to the Planning Commission. And then in the PT&amp;D zones specifically, we've had the garrison, which is an important development for this community and for our economic development. And they've asked us to look at these in a more aggressive, timely manner because they have a site plan in and they'd like to submit an additional site plan. And so when we looked at the transit zones and the shared parking and we compared them to the other urban communities, we did see that we could indeed reduce that. That would make the garrison and PT&amp;D zones like Quiet Town Center and our future downtown Stafford more competitive with our neighbors in the north. And it would also meet the requirements of DEQ or the recommendations of DEQ, I should say. And so, we think this is a relatively small change. Basically, what we're doing is currently, we say, if you have three different uses, you have to use the use that is the most restrictive in parking, where you have to have the most parking. Instead of doing that, we would say, when you have shared uses, you use the type of use that allows the most shared parking. So you'd have the least amount of parking. This, like I said, is more in line with the urban communities, more in line with DEQ. And in order to move this forward quickly, we'd like to have a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission to allow the garrison to move forward with their site plan. It's a relatively minor change and it's something that we think we can accommodate the garrison development because it's important to this community.
And we can meet all the public notice requirements between now and the July 10th meeting?
Yeah, this is a new business item, so it's for information purposes only. We'll bring this back to the Board and to the public through our agenda process on the, as a consent agenda item. And then that will be to authorize the joint public hearing on July 10th. There's three weeks between the June 19th and July 10th meeting, so we can meet all the requirements for notification.
Okay, questions for Mr. Smith. Ms. Mauer?
Because this is impacting a particular site plan, one of the things I would like to see when you come back, unless you have the answer right now, is how many parking spaces would the garrison have required under the current? And how many are they, is it going to require under the new? So, since this came up because of the garrison, I'm certain that you have that number?
Yes, right now, it won't affect the existing site plan. But they were concerned that if the parking levels weren't changed for this one, they have another one they're getting ready to submit. And that would require them to have 50 additional spaces. So this is in, is proactive to make sure that we don't set a precedent with the approval of the existing one.
Okay, and so, here, wait, so it doesn't affect the approval of the existing one?
Right, so if we change this ordinance now, we can approve the existing one with the shared parking of the new approval. And then when they go on to the next stage, they won't have to change that, those, because once you approve a site plan, any additional site plans on the same development should use the same requirements.
Right.
And so they don't want to have that same requirement for the next one that comes in that would require them to have 50 additional.
Okay, so they, let me, and I'm sorry, so this ordinance will affect their current site plan that they've already submitted? Because they submitted a site plan that wasn't in accordance with our current ordinance?
They submitted a site plan and one of our comments was that it didn't go with the current ordinance. It went with their generalized development plan. The generalized development plan had a 1.2 parking and our table shows a 1.1. And so we asked them to change that and they had some concerns about that because in the future, it will affect their next one by 50 spaces.
Okay.
They're actually building more, more spaces in Phase 1 now than we require, which is kind of a paradox here. But the next one, which affects how they finance, how they, they're planning for, for the future. They need to know that the policy is going to be applied in a certain way so that when they go get their financing, they're in good stead.
So there isn't a rush for us to approve their current site plan? Because they're building more parking, so they're in accordance with our current ordinance?
They, we could approve the current site plan as is. However, they, what they say, as Mr. Dudenhaffer said, it's a package deal with them and they can't get to financing unless they do it as a package deal and they're guaranteed that the next round will get them that lower parking.
Okay, now we just...
Just let me, let me just so explain something you said. They have submitted a site plan with the numbers as it was applied on a general development plan.
Okay.
And so that's where we are. That's what they want to submit. But we're saying, we can't approve that, we can approve that site plan, but they feel that they can't go forward because it will set a precedent and they won't be able to, they'll have to apply the lesser of the, or the greater of the numbers.
We can't approve the current site plan with the numbers that they have on it.
Okay.
Because it's not in our code. We believe that those numbers are appropriate, but we have to change the code to do it.
So why did we approve a GDP that wasn't in accordance with our code?
The GDP had a table and the comments on the table said, "For illustrative purposes only and will be approved during the site plan process."
And why does this affect their financing? How does this affect their financing?
They have to go and prove that they're able to build what they want to build to their finance people. And so they don't want to move forward to the site plan until they're sure that they won't have to build additional parking above what they believe is required.
And they're going to line up financing for the whole project, even though they haven't submitted a site plan for the additions. The two, there's actually two big additions.
In the generalized development plans, there's often things that are vague in nature because it's a generalized development plan. And that's why the tables have those kind of comments, because they don't bind us.
Right, but here's my concern, here's my concern. Because I have trust issues, and I especially have trust issues with developers. And the way we do our process, hence my request that we don't get last-minute changes at the dais so we can look at these unintended consequences like this. So, we have approved a GDP that wasn't in accordance with our ordinance. And so now we're between a rock and a hard place because everybody's very excited about the movie theater and, but they can't build it because the GDP that we, and I was not part of the Board at the time, that was approved on this board wasn't in accordance with the ordinance. So now we have to change the ordinance, which by the way, 50 parking spaces saves him roughly $15,000 a spot. So, do you understand where the hair on the back of my neck is seriously kind of going up?
Right.
Madam Chair, we looked at this pretty broadly.
Hang on, go ahead, Mr. Foley.
We looked at this pretty broadly and said, what is, what's best in terms of policy going forward? Particularly in these limited areas where we want more dense development and urban development. So, we recognize the things Ms. Mauer has talked about. But we try to take a step back and look at the big picture. And we feel like this is the right move to make regardless of the circumstances. So that's why we brought it forward. We think it's going to help with downtown Stafford and the other things we're trying to promote.
Okay, Mr. Snellings?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we're just here today to hear this. It's coming back on the 19th and we'll authorize a public hearing. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Smith? Okay.
Thank you.
No action is required. Is that correct? Yes, no action is required on that item. That's our last item for today until the 7 o'clock meeting, but we do have closed session. Mr. Snellings, if you could please lead us into closed session.
I thought you said, please lead us into prayer.
Well, we need that too.
I wasn't really prepared for that. A resolution to authorize closed meeting, whereas the Board desires to hold a closed meeting for one consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members regarding a specific legal matter, requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel and consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to the litigation or such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating and litigating posture of the Board. Whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7 and A8, such discussions may occur in closed session. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously to go into closed session. The, this ends the afternoon session of the June 5th meeting and we're adjourned till 7 o'clock. Thank you. Oh, well, we've got to come back and certify. Thank you. Cast your vote. Motion unanimous. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to waive the bylaws such that we can vote on an item coming out of closed meeting.
Second.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right, so we need to vote on waiving the bylaws. Cast your vote. Motion passes. Ms. Mauer?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to authorize the county attorney to file an appeal in the 127 Poplar Jr. LLC case in accordance with our closed meeting discussion.
Okay, all those in favor, cast your vote. Motion carries 6 to 1. We are now adjourned till the 7 o'clock meeting. Thank you. Going to lead us in the invocation and Mr. Cavalier will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Please stand. Heavenly Father, we come to you today to ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage a meaningful discussion and allow us to grow closer as a group on the Board of Supervisors and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make the decisions that might affect everyone. Thank you, God, for being in our lives and lift us up as we go forward. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, I am excited to welcome the student participants in the county's YES program. YES stands for Youth Engaged in Stafford. Mr. Jeff Shover heads up this program. Mr. Shover, will you please join me at the dais and tell us about the YES program? And in the audience today, we have a number of students from Colonial Forge High School and they will be receiving certificates and coins. So, I'm going to go ahead and call your names and if you would all please come up now. Natalie Bisco, Matthew Stocks, I know, is not able to come tonight, but I wanted to recognize him. Emily Guerrero, Sarah Miller, Connor Merk, Elena Awah Marah, Dylan Amunwok, and Serena Heron.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How's everybody doing this evening? All right, this is the second time that I've been given the microphone today. So I'm going to hopefully get through this without getting the red light. So if you'll just give me just a few minutes, I want to explain to you what a wonderful program that we've developed here in Stafford County. And again, it's called the YES program, Youth Engaged in Stafford. This was, this program was the brainchild of my supervisor, Ms. Donna Kraus. And Donna has a very special talent of identifying certain needs in the county and how to specifically address them. One of the biggest needs that we have here in the county and really across the country is to give teenagers, especially those sophomores, juniors, and seniors in high school, a chance to have their voice heard. This program is very, very unique in the Commonwealth. It gives select students a chance to really have their voice heard. And what they do is they apply through an application process and then they're selected to serve on one of the Board's commissions or committees. Now, although they can't vote on certain issues, they are strongly, strongly encouraged to really get engaged, hence the name, YES, Youth Engaged in Stafford, and ask questions. They could do research, if they needed to do any kind of research, and really bring their ideas to the table. We have several of these young adults behind me have done a wonderful, wonderful job of really bringing everything, their heart and soul, to the community. And it really makes, makes me proud to say that they're part of our team now. We preach teamwork here at Stafford County and it's really part of our culture here. And what they did in the community really is special. And thank you very, very much for all that you've done for us to help make Stafford County such a great place to live. So ladies and gentlemen, if you would join me and just give them a big round of applause. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Connor Merk. There you go, sir. Congratulations. All right. Alana Ahwimar. Awesome. Thank you very much. Good job. Thank you. All right. Sarah Miller. Sarah, hey, Sarah. How are you? Good job. Thank you, Sarah. All right. Serena Heron. Serena, there you go. Good job. Thank you. Emily Guerrero. Come on down. Thank you very much, Emily. And Natalie Bisco. Come on down. Thank you, Natalie. Awesome job. Thank you.
I'm on listen two.
I'm on listen two. And what was your name, sir?
Jared Holmes.
Jared Holmes. And Jared, who did you serve with?
The telecommunications commission.
Jared Holmes in the telecommunications. Please give him a hand. Good job. Thank you. We got you clear in that office. Ladies and gentlemen, again, these kids have given everything that they have to this community. And believe me, when I was a sophomore, junior in high school, the last thing I was thinking about was being a part of our local government like they do to try to improve the community and make it as best as we can. So again, one more time, just give them a big hand. They're really great.
So can you each just pass the mic down and say which commission or committee you served on, and maybe, you know, one thing you learned, or maybe something that was challenging? And if you don't want to, that's fine. You can just pass the mic to the next person.
We'll start with you.
Yeah, so I was with telecommunications, and I thought it was really great because, especially learning about how each provider, each internet service provider is really -- we have to work with them closely just to make sure that everything is fair, pricing is fair, and that everyone can have access, especially from a student perspective, it just kind of -- because everything is so technology-centric, everything is delivered through the internet, grades, assignments. So it's just, it's really important, and so I appreciated the opportunity.
All right. So my name's Serena Heron. I was with the group home commission, and I'd probably say the most challenging thing with that commission was understanding the budgets. It is not as simple as you think it would be. But I really enjoyed the commission, and I'm looking forward to doing it next semester.
Thank you.
Hi. I served on the architectural review board, and one of the most important things I learned was a lot more work goes into preserving history here in Stafford than I really could have thought. I was on the historical committee, and I didn't really see anything challenging, but I thought it was pretty amazing how, like, they all summed everything up in one meeting that was like an hour long, when really, like, they were doing like so much work behind the scenes at home, or like where they're going. I thought that was pretty amazing.
I was on the CPMT commission, which is basically trying to find means to help out at-risk youth and families. And it was really difficult trying to balance out being able to pay for these kids, to be able to get the right education for their needs, as well as, you know, finding the money to do so. And then so it took a lot of brainstorming to be able to come up with anything at all. And we also have to work closely with neighboring counties, because, you know, what works for one county may not work for another, and then everything has to sort of come, everything is sort of connected, so. Yep.
My name is Connor Merk, and I served on the planning commission. And it was interesting to see the dynamic between members of the public, businesses, and commissioners, and the local government. And it was great seeing the public being involved with all of the local issues, and I look forward to doing it again.
My name is Emily Guerrero, and I actually worked on the agriculture commission. And I felt that probably the most difficult or challenging thing was probably making sure that everyone in Stafford County was represented in a way, that everyone felt as if they were presented in a way that was fair, but they were also felt as if they were part of the community, which was also probably one of the best things, too, because preserving Stafford County is one of the greatest things we could probably ever do.
Hi, I'm Natalie Bisco. I'm on the utilities board, and I learned that there's a lot of thinking and thought with each simple step, and that with everything we have, it's like we take a lot for granted, pretty much. Like, you don't think about all the water and everything that goes into what we do here, and I like it a lot, so thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much for all the time and energy that you spent in making all those meetings happen in your regular school day and all the other, you know, opportunities and challenges that you have in your school life. So you guys are all very articulate, and I hope all of you apply and come back again next year, and thank you for coming out tonight.
If you wish to comment, please remain courteous and respectful to the audience and board members.
Hang on. Sorry. Remain courteous and respectful to the audience and board members. It's important for you to keep track of your time at the podium so that everyone will have a time to address the board. If you spoke about an item at this afternoon's session, you may not speak about that same item again this evening. If you wish to speak about one of the items scheduled for public hearing, please hold your comments until that public hearing is opened. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. Speak slowly and clearly into the microphone. Begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the podium to monitor the time of your presentation. Green indicates the start of your presentation. Yellow indicates that you have one minute to summarize your comments, and red indicates that your time is up. And with that, I will, for the general public comments, I do not have any speaker cards. Would anyone like to address the board? If so, please come forward.
You know, it's nice to see the YES people, but I'm the only public speaker, so let's get those YES people out here to speak publicly, especially want to hear from that utility person. I thought that was pretty good. I brought this sign specifically today that lease supplies houses cash, 703-232-9829. I'll be sending out a sign. Hopefully, we'll get $100 for that, right? All right. Baby boomers invented the iPhone. Want to keep reminding everyone of that. Tomorrow is the 50-year anniversary of RFK's assassination. Some of you weren't alive 50 years ago. The day after that would have been my dad's 87th birthday. Happy birthday, Dad. I miss you. June 18th is the Board of Equalization meeting at 2:00 PM. I invite the public to come out, and I'll show you that your Stafford County tax assessors has been assessing your property incorrectly, not using acres. You'll be surprised when I show you that 1,225 square feet, which is .0281 acres, cost almost $100,000 in taxes. And then you wonder why the rich get richer and the poor get poorer, because who do you think lives in 1,225 square feet? It's not the people who are living in your HOA, your Houses of Aristocrats. All right. Today, Secretary of Education, she got grilled by the Senate Subcommittee, but she stood up very well. And I would remind the school board, as well as the Board of Supervisors, that this wording of north versus south is very good, but it pertains to gerrymandering, just like east and west. And I hope you all realized this past weekend that the Chesapeake Bay watershed means something. I've told this to people for the last 28 years, especially as a property investor. If you buy property on the east side of I-95, you will be flooded. You'd be surprised, all the pavement that's been done, and people don't know about Hurricane Fran in '94 and Hurricane Isabella that came up '95. So you all need to be aware. Also, my tenants were, had one of their cars towed, so I want to educate the people about Virginia Code 18.2-119. Shank's towing has been duly served. I'll see them in small claims court.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to our two public hearings that we have tonight. The first public hearing is to authorize revisions to the Stafford County Fire Code, which will be presented by Fire Marshal Roger Sutherland. Mr. -- oh, Andrew Milliken. Thank you, Andrew.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Andrew Milliken, fire protection engineer. Today, you've got a public hearing, as well as the opportunity to approve the revision, comprehensive revision to the Fire Prevention Code. Just a little overview real quick of what this ordinance entails. Chapter 12 of your county code is the Fire Prevention Code. It has a number of different articles that range from the Fire and Rescue Department, the Office of the Fire Marshal, unlawful fires, things of that nature, open burning regulations, as well as the actual Fire Prevention Code itself. This portion of the county code codifies your commitment to protecting lives and property from devastating fires, not only fires, but also hazardous materials, incidents, explosions, things of that nature. So it also is our source for ensuring safety of our first responders. The current code has been in place for quite a while, and has not been updated in quite a few decades. In fact, a number of different references are severely outdated, and it's definitely time for a revision. But the second reason we're looking at doing a revision to the code is most recently, at the state level, there has been some move to severely change the statewide Fire Prevention Code, and we foresee this year having some significant changes to that document that currently you adopt by default. So this revision encompasses simply just continuing to do what we do today, which is to stick with the current Fire Prevention Codes, that we would not be automatically subjected to that change at the state level. The, it's also important to keep our codes up, standards up to date, so we can take advantage of any more current, more modern technology for solutions, as well as any hazards. So what's included within this revision? It's going to adopt the current addition, like I said, of the Fire Prevention Code regulations as they apply today. They are, that'll help protect the businesses and our community from those undesirable changes at state level that really remove technical provisions from the standards, where there would be specific and direct guidance, that language has been removed. It's also a total, complete rewrite of the entire chapter, so that's why your packet is significant in size. However, it's important to recognize that the vast majority of the changes are existing local language or state language from existing regional regulations and policies. So there's really not a whole lot changing, even though there's, it appears that the whole chapter is being revised, which it is. Additional changes that we've encompassed in this revision to prohibit some unlawful activities, including damaging fire apparatus, additional penalties for injuring fire and rescue personnel, crossing fire lines, reducing occurrences of false alarms. We have some additional incentives to reducing that number of alarms that we would handle that would reduce the workload on the, on fire and rescue. Ensuring cleanup of hazardous material spills, making sure we have the tools in our toolbox to make sure that we can mitigate that hazard, but also make sure that it is taken care of the whole way through cleanup. Increases setback distances, so we had some open burning regulations that had to come into compliance with the statewide standards, model standards, through the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. And we also, that included some setback distances, which would be increased from what they are today around high-risk facilities. What is that? That's an airfield or a school facility, hospital facility, things of that nature, so that we don't have the potential for, for health issues with regards to smoke produced. Some additional items you can see there, food preparation vehicles and smoke alarms and exterior door numbering. I think you've seen those probably at our schools. That helps our first responders, not only fire and rescue, but also the sheriff's office, so codifying some of those guidelines for what that should look like. How did we get here? The, starting back this fall, when we saw that the state was moving forward on some of these changes at the statewide level, we started with a comprehensive review of our peer localities and their Fire Prevention Code regulations. Put all those things together and put it together in a package that was reviewed by your citizen advisory board, the Fire Prevention Code Appeals Board. They took a look at that, provided some additional input, as well as their approval. After we received their approval, we coordinated with both the county attorney, as well as the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality regarding the open burning regulations. In fact, if we are to modify any local regulations regarding open burning, it has to be reviewed, as well as adopt, approved by the Virginia Air Pollution Control Board. That was done, that we coordinated with their model ordinances, as well as submitting our, putting together our regulations, so they marry up together. And that agency, that board, Virginia Air Pollution Control Board, gave their approval in April of this year. And then lastly, this has been brought to the, to your Public Safety Committee, February, April, and received approval and recommendation to go to the full board back in May. And the last thing I will add that might be not exactly clear in your packet is that this, if approved, moving forward, this would take effect July 1 of 2018. So give us staff some time to get things up to date and take care of that, but if approved, it would be July 1. With that, open up for any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Milliken? Yes.
Hello, sir. I have two questions for you. When it talks about a special incineration device as being, providing better combustion?
Yes.
Wouldn't that be preferable to open burning?
So a special incineration device would allow you to conduct the open burning in a way that is more efficient, as well as produces less smoke, less hazards. So that allows us to reduce some of those setbacks that would otherwise have to be very, very large if you had a, if you weren't using that device.
Okay. Second question. Do we have any miners that are working in our volunteer fire department?
I'm not sure.
Rock Hill has miners?
They're juniors.
Oh, juniors, remember?
Miners, juniors, yes. Not mine.
Yes, we do have junior firefighters, EMTs.
Okay. How many do we have?
I don't know.
I don't know the exact number. I would say probably around 25.
Wow, that's a lot. Really, I want to commend you on it. I was reading that in your ordinance, and I saw the caveats and restrictions that we put around them, and I was kind of impressed that we have 25. Wow.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll open it up to the public. Would anyone like to address the board on item number 27, Proposed Ordinance 018-24?
Paul Wodowsky, 8 Pickett Lane in the gerrymandered Rock Hill district. Reading the background report, you said the current version references 1996 Prevention Code, which provided outdated requirements. Then you list things, and then I love how you put in a catch-all, and other requirements. And what other requirements? And to reinforce for you, there are 95 counties in the Commonwealth. This is not the state of Virginia. It's the Commonwealth of Virginia. And it seems to me you're reinventing the And it seems to me you're reinventing the wheel, because obviously, from the Commonwealth level, we have combined not only the 95 counties, but all the cities in the Commonwealth. And here you go, you want to provide changes in your little empire here, with your $1 million Station 14. Hope the water storm didn't affect your base there this weekend, but I've, you might get some more water there. I'm just thinking, because I want to see if we're gonna, someone's gonna try to come and tell me that I can't speak.
Okay. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. With that, I'll bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion for 018 dash 24?
Motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to close the public hearing. Sorry. All right.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second? All right. Second by Ms. Shelton. All right, a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. Is there any discussion? All right. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to item number 28. Our next public hearing is to consider amendments to the county's water and sewer master plan, which will be presented by Brian Council, Deputy Director of Public Works. Mr. Council.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, you have in front of you the opportunity to consider the Department of Public Works Utilities Division Water and Sewer Master Plan. The merger of the two departments, as you're familiar with, has caused a lot longer names for a few things. This is, this is one of them. Just a little bit of history before we go into the agenda. The last master plan was done in 2006 and '07, and was done before a lot of changes have occurred in the water, with the water usage of the county, as well as didn't take into consideration a bunch of projects that had, that had been completed since then. O'Brien and Gier, represented here by two, two of our consultants, took the plan that we did in 2007, the department did in 2007, considered all the changes, water use habits changes and everything, and came up with a new plan. We worked with planning to collect all the data for the land use, based on the 2016 comprehensive plan that the board approved a few years ago. So that's kind of the makeup and the history of, of what brings this to you tonight. Going through a little bit of the agenda, the objective, the main objectives of the master plan are to address any changes in needs that the, that the infrastructure needs based on growth or operational changes. It, it looks at some of our investment priorities, whether that is significant operational changes, growth, things like that, and other serious operational enhancements, based on new, new connections, new interceptors, new transmission line, based on all the new infrastructure that we've built since the master plan was last done. This is in, the attempt of the master plan is in direct alignment with the comprehensive plan and plan development. There's also a cost summary, and then there'll be opportunity for us to ask questions and provide answers as, as we move on through. First slide is a financial slide. It points out that the utilities fund is financially independent. There's no, there are no, no tax, no taxes, real estate taxes, no sales taxes, no gas taxes, anything like that that goes into the funding of these improvements. It's all based entirely on sales of water, availability fees, connection fees, and prorata Little bit about a couple of these fees. Availability and prorata are paid for by development. They're paid for at plan approval or at building permit, and they are particular for, for growth, residential and commercial. The fund is technically called an enterprise fund. We collect the revenues and put them into separate allocated buckets, and spending through those accordingly. Some of them are restricted, some of them are not, based on the type of account or a type of fund that it is. The primary objectives of this water and sewer master plan is to provide capacity for growth and development, plain and simple. We need to know where we're able to serve, and, and good, and good standing, and the places that we need to build additional infrastructure to serve. Next primary objective is to meet all the regulatory requirements, and they are many. There are several different regulatory agencies, DEQ, VDH, Ches, Ches Bay, a lot of different things. So this looks at all the regulatory requirements, and makes sure that we're considering all those as our system grows, and that we operate the system. Then the last primary responsibility is to maintain reliability. What do we need to do to make the system work better, more cost-efficient, and ensure that the people that, that are currently on the system continue to have adequate water and sewer, as well as the, the development that's planned and encouraged all over the county, that we can serve and maintain that service as well? Guiding principles, every plan's going to have a guiding principle. We want to maintain excellent customer services, proactive planning, sustainability, fiscal responsibility, and adaptability, all important things. Okay. Some of the things that have happened since the last plan was completed, as you can see on the slide, I won't read it verbatim, but we completed 35 fairly major projects since 2007. Large wastewater collector interceptors, large water transmission lines. One of the primary changes in the county, or in the, in our system, is that people are using less water. Water demands that build out reduced from, in both wastewater and water. This is primarily due to low-flow devices, a few other things that were considered. We don't know exactly why the water usage is down, but it's, it's down sharply. Doesn't know, doesn't mean it'll always stay that way, but for the foreseeable future, this is what we're encountering and what we're anticipating. Some of the other reasons there, why some of the water usage is down, and some of the system, our system characteristics have changed, is limiting water service outside the urban service area, which I think the urban service area was reduced in a couple of areas. And so there'll be less services going out to those areas. Changes in customer behavior, that's what I was talking about, about lower water usage. And then improved control of peak sewer flows, less infiltration and inflow. We've, some of our maintenance projects address some of these issues that were lingering. We have more to address, but that's another reason why some of our sewer capacity was renewed, with tackling some of those, what we call I and I issues. Investment priorities. This slide is, is just to point out that we have near-term investment priorities, and we're focused on economic development, reliability, and the regulatory compliance. Our water and sewer capacity is good through 2030. So a little more than 10 years, we don't anticipate any type of major water treatment plant, or wastewater treatment plant, capacity increases. Those are the, usually the largest ticket items that we have in, in the Utilities Division, as you saw with the Lake Moonee Water Treatment Plant and the Lake Moonee Reservoir. Those were significant capacity increases. Also, in 2010 to 2012, we did major upgrades in both wastewater collection plants, as part of what we call the nutrient removal upgrades. Those set us for the, for the immediate future, next 10, 10, at least 10 years or so. There shouldn't be any major water and sewer capacity increases. This plan also includes projects that have been scheduled or moved to anticipate planned development. There are projects in the Courthouse area, there are projects in Centerport, that have been, they're, they're always, they were needed projects, they're just moved to address what we believe is going to be anticipated more recent growth and quicker recurring growth than, than what the master plan last time accounted for. Hand a drink of water. Reliability and regulatory compliance, part of our investment priorities. We do have some items in there for our wastewater and water treatment plants, not from a capacity standpoint, but from a reliability and operational standpoint. They, they are old, I don't say they're old, they are past, they've been around for a while, they've had numerous upgrades. To continue to do that, we need to invest in some repair, replacement projects, as well as the often-needed regulatory compliance. Rules are changing all the time. Our consultants are on top of all that. They let us know when the, when the, at the Commonwealth level, these, these regulatory changes are going to occur. And we design projects and, and additions to the plants to make sure that we're putting water back into, from a water treatment standpoint, we're putting water into the customers' pipelines that is, that is safe, and we're putting water back into our rivers and creeks that are well, well inside the compliance levels. Operational enhancements. We plan on down, creating, getting rid of two pressure zones. These aren't things that are labeled in the field, so most people don't know where they are, but we currently have 10 pressure zones that are dictated by the, the tanks that you see around the county. We're going to condense those 10 down to eight as an operational enhancement. Will save money on maintenance of tanks, also get better pressure in some areas. Going to decommission four water storage tanks. This is a plan. Tanks that are past their useful service life, that have been replaced recently by other tanks. We're working to decommission those. And then...
Excuse me, Brian.
Sure.
Could you, could you identify those four tanks? Or have you yet?
Yes, sir. The Bandi tank off Route 17, the Crane's Corner tank, which is up near Stafford High School, the Ferry Road tank, and the hospital tank that's right across the street from the hospital, not the new one, but the short stand pipe that's, it's, it's called the Courthouse tank, but it's right across the street from the hospital.
And the one on Enon Road?
That one is going to stay in service for a while, until we decide what we're going to do with, we need another tank to support the, the northern part of the 342 pressure zone, which is, includes Enon Road, the Centerport area. There's a new tank planned for that same parcel that the ground tank there at Enon Road and Hulse Chapel is. The plan right now is to build a elevated 2 million gallon storage tank there.
Does that, is that specified in this report?
This report would show that we need another water supply in that area. It doesn't dictate where that tank is. That's what we select based on topographical issues or concerns, and location, property acquisition, things like that. So once, once the master plan identified that we needed that storage capacity, we, we selected that site on Enon Road for that, because we already owned it.
Okay.
But, but that's, you had indicated you wanted to talk about that, and we'll be happy to, happy to do that.
Thank you.
Some of the other recommended changes to the sewer system is the county has, depending on what, what pump stations are being accepted into the system from development, we have between 95 and 100 wastewater pump stations. Over time, infill development can aid us in getting rid of those, or allow the, what, what wastewater went into a pump station to flow by gravity to a different, to a, through, to a different, different route. And so we learn over time that we can, we can decommission a wastewater pumping station here and there, and save quite a bit of money in operational costs. The alignment with plan development, build-out flow projections coordinated with planning department, like I said, they, each parcel in the county, in the urban service area, gets assigned a flow. We take those flows, and we build them into a formula, and we determine what the need is for areas that are, that are not served currently in the urban service area, or which areas, based on development, additional flows, need infrastructure enhancements, larger pipes to collect water, larger pipes to distribute water. The model that we use, O'Brien and Gier uses, we keep a copy of that in our office, too, to run short, short, quick models, but the overall model that we use takes into account rapid assessment and capacity of future developments. We work closely with O'Brien and Gier when we get, when projects come on board, they get submitted to planning. We look at the, the overall nature of that project. We try to give them a heads-up, give them the opportunity to review that, see how it's going to affect our overall system. So we're constantly upgrading this model, not upgrading, but analyzing and updating projects that are complete, to make sure that we're well ahead of the curve, and that we can anticipate and react to anything that might be coming up. This is just a pie chart, kind of broken down into the different, there are several categories of, 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 of spending. The primary three categories are maintenance, which is, which is significant, but economic development, that's really economic development and growth. And then facility upgrades, that's everything, anything we do to our plants, wastewater and, and water treatment plants, just a breakdown of the spending there. And be happy to address any questions you might have.
Okay. The board have questions for Mr. Council? Okay. Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to open the public hearing for item number 28, Public Works Utilities Division Authorize Amendments to the County's Water Sewer Master Plan. So at this point in time, going to open the public hearing, if you would like to address the board, please come to the podium.
Paul Woldowski, Eight Picket Lane, this is the only reason I came today. We don't get excellent customer service. You're only worried about the future. Those of us in the past, we don't get a county water and sewer bill. I keep on dictating to you, there is a formal complaint at the Virginia State Corporate Commission. I don't know why they didn't name it the Virginia Commonwealth Corporate Commission, but that's not my problem. Eventually, I will get an answer. Where are you able to serve? Well, you need to go to all the places built from '83 to '87, 143 townhouses at Stafford Meadows Incorporated. And then '88 to '89, you go to Stafford Meadows Roman Numero Two, which was 66 apartments, which I'll bring up in the Board of Equalization on June 18th. Your consultants only worry about the future. I spent 40 years doing modeling, and your model is way out. Your comprehensive plan is way out of date. Yes, you've done 35 projects, but you refuse to address, you're not doing it for me. I told you before, you're doing it for the school teacher, the blue-collar worker. Right now, I have two E7s who are from the National Guard. That's who you're doing it for. You know, it's great that we're using less water. It's called tankless hot water heaters. That's one technology that's out there. And guess what? I got it in both my properties. Because I'm tired of giving you money that doesn't give me anything. You got your connection fees, your sales of water. Well, you have so much money that you're going to save by taking 10 pressure zones to eight, then that's a savings from operational costs. So let's put it into the people who have no county water and sewer bill, because we just have a swamp here, just like we have one in Washington, DC. And I'm working slowly but surely to clean out the swamp. I'm not the President of the United States. He's got a much bigger swamp to deal with. But I'm tired of listening to these presentations. We believe. Believe is subjective. Either you know it, and it's objective, or I don't believe you. I play poker, and when you show me it, then I believe you. Otherwise, I'm not saying you're lying, you're bluffing. And I'm calling you out on it, you're bluffing. Your service stinks.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, with that, I am going to close the public hearing and bring this item back to the board. This is Resolution R-18 dash 68. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Okay, no discussion by the board. Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. This concludes our business for this evening. The June 5 meeting of the Board of Supervisors is adjourned.